Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Tacoma Park City Council meeting. I call to order this session of the City Council, and the clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember Kofar.
Here.
Councilmember Dibala.
Here.
Councilmember Kostic.
Here.
Councilmember Siemens.
Present.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Cersei.
Okay.
I think she's just joining us now.
Just joining us? Awesome. Great. Well, welcome, everyone. For our agenda this evening, we do have a change. We're moving the tree canopy resolution from our voting session to a work session. There were some last-minute changes and other things that were, we were unable to get posted. And since this is a resolution and only takes one vote, we felt like, let's do another work session, since we're also doing the tree ordinance, to give people time to work on it tonight, and then we will vote on it next week. So that is the only change for tonight. So after we have public comments on voting items and other public comments, we will move right to our voting session and then our work sessions. Looking at the next couple of weeks before our August recess, next week is Wednesday, July 22. We will start our meeting actually, and do it in two parts next week. From 5:00 to 6:30, we have two presentations. One is the new AV BikeWay presentation. And then we will also be welcoming the Montgomery County Planning Director and Planning Staff to talk to us about a mini master plan for Tacoma Park and the work that the Planning Department has been doing around race equity. Then we'll take a break, get some dinner, and come back again at 7:30 for our regular meeting. We will have the reading of a poem by our poet laureate Kathleen O'Toole. And we'll have a pretty robust voting session next week. We have the first reading ordinance amending the election code to accommodate vote by mail. First reading ordinance setting forth the details of the 2020 city election. First reading ordinance amending the Tacoma Park Code Title 12, which is our tree ordinance. And we'll also have our first reading ordinance approving our FY21 budget amendment. Number one, we will have the resolution on the tree canopy that we are moving from tonight to next week. Resolution for approving submissions to the MML Legislative Action Request. And our work session will be a discussion of term extensions for committee members next week. Then on Wednesday, July 29, our voting session that night will be the second reading charter amendment, a resolution enabling the city's elections to be conducted by mail. Second reading ordinance amending the election code to accommodate vote by mail. Second reading ordinance setting forth the details of the 2020 city election. Second reading ordinance amending the tree code. And the second reading ordinance approving the FY21 budget amendment number one. We will also have emergency ordinance regarding committee term extensions. A resolution providing for appointments to the Tacoma Park Youth Council. A resolution providing for the City Council's summer recess from July 30 to September 15. Our work sessions that night will be an assessment of park quality, accessibility, and race. And we will have a check-in on our COVID-19 response. So those are our upcoming meetings. Tonight, we did have scheduled a public hearing on proposed charter amendments enabling the city elections to be conducted by mail. But no one has signed up for that public hearing. So we will move on to public comments on voting items. Our first, our voting item tonight is our first reading charter amendment resolution enabling the city elections to be conducted by mail. Don't believe anyone signed up for that, so we will go on to trees. And I do believe we have some folks signed up for that. Since we only have three people signed up this evening, we'll just take them all in order on the public comments. First, we, do we have Liz with us?
Yes.
Okay. All right, Liz, you're up.
Okay. I hope Jesse's about to post something instead of my.
I will do that. Just give me a minute. Go ahead.
I'm Liz Kleemeyer, Ward 1. In front of you on the screen are two proposed amendments to the tree resolution. These are a distilled version of what 48 residents submitted to you a couple of weeks ago. I'd like to ask the council to consider these amendments during tonight's discussion. The advantage of the First Amendment is that it states a clear objective to protect and increase capacity to provide habitat. It then lays out clear strategic guidelines for achieving this objective. The Second Amendment gives clear next steps to city staff. That clarity is the advantage of these amendments over the current version of the resolution. The council must express its resolve clearly, unambiguously. As to the content of the amendments, you know that quite a few residents have sent emails in support of them. I'd like to read two of those emails. One comes from Diane Ives. Dear Mayor and Councilmembers, the city with your leadership has advanced climate change policies that put Tacoma Park at the forefront of renewable energy policy. We have the chance to do the same with the tree resolution to ensure that this small gem of a city is able to demonstrate leadership for native, ecologically beneficial trees and a more rich and biodiverse community. Please introduce the two amendments. Another email comes from Dr. Alessandra Sagasti, PhD and Professor of Biology at Montgomery College. Dear Mayor and Councilmembers, I am an ecologist, an educator, and a Tacoma Park resident. I am writing to urge you to support the two amendments. I teach my students about ecosystem function, climate change, and about the ecosystem services provided by urban trees. Native trees are more likely to provide increased ecosystem services, habitat that supports greater biodiversity and greater climate resiliency. When we plant new trees for our city, we should choose trees that provide the greatest benefits over the long term. Mayor and council members, thank you for your attention.
Sorry, I was muted. Didn't realize it. Next, we have Mark Sherman.
Thank you so much, Mayor. Just timing myself here. So I welcome the chance to offer some thoughts tonight about the resolution because it's an overarching principle that I would encourage the council to incorporate into this resolution. And that is the idea that renters, such as myself, need to be explicitly included in the framework. According to city census data, 43% of city residents live in rental housing. 43% is a substantial proportion of the population. But we are at a distinct disadvantage when it comes to trying to claim the benefits of a good tree canopy. We do not own the property on which we live. And so this ordinance, which is good or bad, as you may see fit as far as its relationship with property owners, leaves us out of the equation. And so I would urge the council to consider adding to this resolution a principle that renters have a right to shade. Just as we have a right to heat and running water, we should have, we don't actually have it now, but we should have a right to shade. It should be something that comes with your lease. It should be right in there as an obligation of the landlord. And so although some aspects of this resolution are trying to shift the balance of rights and responsibilities, in this particular instance regarding those of us who rent, what we're actually looking for is some leverage that we don't have right now. These are landlords because they owe us little or nothing in this regard. And the city, at least in my own experience, has not had our back. When I asked the Urban Forest Manager to come visit my property and look see with me about what could or could not be done to replace some trees that were taken out on an emergency basis, he declined to meet with me, and I just had no leverage. And so I was disappointed that I couldn't turn to anybody in the city and say, hey, would you at least come, give me the benefit of your thought and your advice, let alone help us exert pressure to bring in that shade which we need. Around the country, and you've seen the news reports, people who never had air conditioning are now being forced to purchase air conditioners. I don't want to do that. I've managed to survive here since 2011 without one. But I lost the tree behind my apartment when it was taken out on an emergency basis. I lost the tree in front of my apartment, and the new one there won't be mature for 30, 40 years. And a lightning bolt took out a third of another tree right in front of me. I'm right on that edge where a lot of people are. So please think about the renters. We are part of your constituency, 43% of city residents, and we deserve a voice in this process. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our last commentator tonight is Mary Jane Machui.
Okay. Hello?
Yeah, Mary Jane.
I can't see anybody anymore.
Well, we can hear you.
I can, thank you. I'm sorry, I was going to make general comments, but I could make a real quick one about the trees. A person told me once that more homeless people die in extreme hate than in extreme cold. So trees can help save some homeless people, okay? And from extreme heat. And I saw a movie on a PBS station called Cooked, Death by Zip Code, and it showed how people, primarily elderly, poor, black people, died because they didn't have air conditioner, working air conditioners, and hardly any shade. So that sort of taps into trees and racial equity, both. Second of all, I'd like to say a thank you to Councilman Hucker. He has sponsored a bill called the Special Appropriation for Mobile Crisis Response that is coming up to the county council this Tuesday, the 21st. It is a step in the right direction. It's not enough, but it's getting there. It's supposed to establish a work group that are going to try to establish mobile units of people, trained social workers and other people, to reply to people who are undergoing a crisis, emotional crisis, rather than the police, and diverting some of the resources to these mobile units. And I hope it is approved. I know we're going to be, council's not going to have that much money, I'm guessing because of the COVID crisis, but I applaud this effort. It's an effort, and I hope it expands because people need to realize that we need more than just a police or social worker to come to somebody's house when the crisis. There needs to be help for people on a long-term basis, not just once in a while when they have a crisis. And also, I'd like to say that I would like to have reparations for Black and disabled homeowners, low-income homeowners, so they can keep in their homes. I would like us and them to stay. I think housing reparations would be appropriate. And as they tend to have lower incomes than the average person homeowner. And I guess that's it for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Jane. Have a nice evening.
You do, too.
All right. Those are our public comments this evening. We will now move on to council comments. Do any council members have comments?
Reparations.
Councilwoman Kostic.
Thank you. Just a really quick thing. I just want to remind people that I have office hours this coming Thursday, which is tomorrow, and also on Sunday at 8:00 PM using Zoom. And I circulated the login information for people who want to take part in that in my weekly email today. So if you didn't get it for some reason, feel free to reach out to me, but I hope people will join me tomorrow at 8:00 PM or Sunday at 8:00 PM just to chat about any issues that you're thinking about. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilmember Smith.
I had the opportunity to talk to Jack Whit Frazier, who's Executive Director of Lunch and Learn. She says that everything is going well with the virtual program this summer. I want to thank her and all the people involved in helping put it together. I thank Ms. Ludlow and the Rect Department for helping stand up Lunch and Learn this year. You know, the pandemic has made it very difficult for young Black and Brown kids to have any activities because a lot of their parents are on the front lines of essential workers. So this is a great opportunity for them. So I want to thank everybody for helping out. And there's a petition going around about eliminating our K-9 unit. I think the council really, I personally don't think the council needs to weigh in on this. I think this is, should be an administrative function that the city manager and the police chief can handle. But I don't think that we should continue with our K-9 unit because it's just not necessary. We do need such support. We could get that from the county or from Prince George's County. But I don't think the city of Tacoma Park needs to maintain a K-9 unit. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Cersei.
Hello. So a couple of quick things. First, I want to thank Small Things Matter for your continued support of the residents in the Hampshire Towers Apartments. There's been a number of food deliveries that have happened over the past week or so. And really, really, really appreciate all of the work that they have put in to help the residents that are struggling during this difficult time. Also, another quick reminder, for residents that are in the Hillwood Manor community, our Hillwood Manor Playground update page has been updated with a survey. And the county staff are looking for feedback by August the 1st. So I just want to encourage everyone to go on to the Hillwood Manor Playground website and provide your feedback in terms of the type of playground equipment that you would like to see at the park. So again, just want to encourage folks to complete that survey. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Dibala.
There we go. Thank you. Yeah, hi, everybody. A couple of quick reminders. So I've had a couple of issue sessions in Board Two on different topics, and thanks to all the folks who came out. There's two more. One is this, the Tuesday, the 21st, on police at 7:30. And one is Tuesday, the 28th, on climate issues at 7:30. We didn't get to climate because we were talking about trees, and I said I had a session to accommodate that. So that's the first thing. Second thing, just for the other council members, so you know, the Just Big Bay Committee of our Metropolitan Council of Governments is meeting Friday, and the Climate and Energy Group is meeting Wednesday. So next week, I'll tell you what happened. And last, on one development-related announcement, 415th and Allen Avenue is a proposed subdivision of a lot into two lots to build a second home. The part I want folks to understand is that the county planning director has decided that it will be reviewed by the full county planning board. So that buys a 90-day window of time for comment, for full county agency staff review, and for a public hearing probably later in September. Stay tuned on dates and scheduling. But I wanted folks to understand that it's not just a two-week window, which some folks were, in Board Two, were concerned about. I said last, but one more. I would appreciate hearing from the city manager and the police chief at some point in the near future about your thoughts on the K-9 proposal petition, excuse me, and how you are going about analyzing that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Siemens.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate Councilmember Smith bringing the petition for K-9 up. And I agree with him that I'm uncomfortable with our police chief analyzing that request and moving forward with the direction that he feels comfortable. I would just like to remind him and the community that although we had a K-9 unit back in the 1990s, early in the year, the 2000s, I advocated for expansion of the K-9 unit because of serious problems that had occurred when we used other jurisdictions' K-9. When we needed K-9s and we didn't have one on duty, we would call for another. And it's turned into very ugly incidents. And so by having our own K-9 units, we were able to better control the way the dogs handled situations. There are actually different training techniques for K-9 dogs. And the preferable way that we used in Tacoma Park and have used is to grab and hold a suspect. Whereas in other jurisdictions, some of our jurisdictions have trained their dogs to be much more aggressive and to not just grab, but to bite and chew. So it's, as with many of these decisions, it's not just a black and white easy decision. You have to consider many aspects. And I'm confident that our police chief will do what's best for the character of Tacoma Park. Thank you.
Councilmember Smith, did you have another?
Yes, thank you. First, I want to say thank you to Councilmember Siemens for the historical context of the K-9 units. I appreciate that. I can't remember everything, so thank you. One other thing that I would ask the city manager to look at with the city attorney is how do we define a nonprofit property? And if we have an agreement with that entity so that they are no longer in rent stabilization, if that ownership changes to a for-profit or it is defined as a for-profit, does that give the city the opportunity to claw back, allowing that property owner to not be a part of our rent stabilization program? I would like to hear thoughts on that from the city manager and the city attorney. You can follow up offline with more information. But I think that is a really important piece of information that the council needs to know. And then I sent an email to the city manager and to Ms. Wiggins about mold in a unit at Essex House, an issue that has been going on for a long time. The owner and property manager of the building has not responded. The tenant has a newborn baby that lives in that unit. I would just hope that city staff can find some type of resolution for this horrible situation. Thank you for the extra time.
Thank you very much. I just have one quick thing this evening. We received a letter last week from the county's, I think it was Technology Department, that they sent out inspectors to Tacoma Park to look at cables, wires, and other things, and identified 780 violations in our city. And so sent out notices to Verizon, Comcast, and RCN. And hopefully, in the next couple of months, we will see even more improvements. I know we've seen some, but I think that's good news that we have gotten that attention. And hopefully, we'll take care of some of those things. And now that we know who to contact, we found a good contact. If in the next couple of months you don't see improvements, please send me poll numbers and locations. And so we can start up a new list and get it taken care of. And with that, I will turn it over to the city manager.
Thank you very much. And yes, if residents have their own issues about cables, they can call the 311, county's 311 number with that same kind of information. And my understanding is that that will work. If not, they can contact us and we'll help. So two, my city manager comments tonight are primarily about two things happening tomorrow. The first is I'm reopening playgrounds in Tacoma Park. We have signs to, I see some happy people. We have some signs to be put up that talk about the fact that we're not sanitizing the playground equipment. People need to wear masks. People should wash their hands before and after playing and they need to keep social distance. One of the things, we we closed the playgrounds when the governor issued kind of the stay at home order in March. And we didn't know a lot about how the COVID-19 was transmitted. We have learned since that being outdoors is is better than being indoors with a group of people. And we know that masks are very helpful and washing hands are very, is very helpful. So we are putting this information out. What I wanted, what I want to share with people is that it's really up to us to monitor how many people are on the playground equipment at a time and and how that's being used. And if the playground equipment is very crowded, come back another time. We we have to watch out for each other and and not have a situation where I feel like I need to close the playgrounds down again because I I want them to be open. I want people to to have fun and play. And so tomorrow, our public works crews will be going around taking down the fencing. The basketball hoops will still be closed because basketball is just not a safe sport. And the water fountains will not be on also for health reasons. But the rest of the site should be open and we're looking forward to seeing happy faces out on the playgrounds. The other thing that happens tomorrow is our second pop up testing sponsored by Montgomery County Department of Health and Human Services at the Rec Center. Tomorrow it will be from 3:00 to 6:00 PM. All 400 slots that were appointments have been filled. There's mixed messaging about whether people can walk up. Please don't walk up. We do not have enough capacity. It's a small restricted site. And call the call the county and find out other locations where you can get a test. We're hoping that we get more pop ups here in Tacoma Park because there's clearly, it's clearly popular. It's clearly a need for that. And and we're hoping that the system to make the appointments gets smoothed out at the county. It's it has been a difficult, confusing process for people, but it does sound like they're moving to a better system. And so we're trying to be supportive and we want to have more testing here. And the kind of comments that questions that were asked by council members on their comments, I'll get back in touch with you on. I don't think there's something that I can answer right off the bat that I will be transmitting the information to you by email and then mentioning it at next week's council meeting.
So though, can I ask a question about the COVID testing? I I had a resident in Ward Three who was tested during the last cycle and she has still not received her results and she's been trying to reach out and and isn't getting any response. Do you have any recommendation on how to reach someone?
So the thing to do is to call the lab with the phone number that's provided on that information. We can get that back out to council members so they know. But we did have a few people that only found out by calling.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and I just, I want to emphasize that if people have experiences like that, to please let Jessica call, I'm just gonna give it to Jessica, our deputy city manager. That information, the the county Health and Human Services always really want feedback on this. The the lab that they're using for this is a private lab and so it's helpful to have that feedback. And just to also acknowledge, we know that the county's call in office was having a great deal of technical difficulties and I I should have had this in my notes just to do a huge shout out to our deputy city manager who was fielding lots and lots of calls from folks about this that and I have, I know we have through the WC manager and I have as well passed on the difficulties that people have had getting through to make appointments and confusion around that. So but all that is super important.
That's right. And and one of the things that we've been advocating very strongly for, and I think has been something that's that still needs to be worked on, really is the efforts to reach people that don't speak English as a first language. And that's, you know, the high rates of Latinx residents in Tacoma Park and in Montgomery County that are testing positive. We need to have that testing available and easy for them and and make sure that we're doing all the right things so people can isolate and find out the information then nicely.
Okay, great. Awesome. So we will move now on to our voting session. As I mentioned at the top of our meeting, we moved around the tree canopy resolutions. So we'll only have one item on our voting session tonight. That's the first reading charter amendment resolution enabling the city elections to be conducted by mail. I don't know if I, before I ask for that to be moved, if the city clerk or our city attorney have anything in particular they want to say. I see heads shaking no on that. All right. Any clarifying big picture questions before I ask for this to be moved? Okay, seeing none. Would someone like to move the proposed charter amendments enabling the city elections to be conducted by mail?
Remove.
Councilmember Smith moved. Councilman Dibala is at your hand. Yep, she's second. Any further discussion questions on this?
I had one question if I could. So this changes the timeframe for the counting and certification and so on of and the swearing in of the newly elected member, council members and mayor because it's expected to take longer to count for a couple of reasons. One, because the as long as the ballots are postmarked on election day, they will count so they could come in several days later and still be counted. And then secondly, there's an anticipation on the part of the Board of Elections that will take longer in general to count these ballots than the regular ones that we normally have. And so the the time is extended to the second Wednesday, so a little over a week after the election. So my only question was, that all makes sense as far as it goes. But do we anticipate with this that there'd be a potential for the Board of Elections to give preliminary results sooner than the eight days? Or must they wait for the entire time before they say anything?
Do you want to handle that?
I I don't. That's a good question. I I think if there are results to be provided, my guess is that they can be. We need to discuss that with the Board of Elections because once the election's over, then it's a process of going through all the ballots and opening them and making sure they're accountable and then doing the scanning. So which will take place over several days. So my thinking is that it could be, that results could be provided just as we do when we count. We can provide, you know, at this point, we have this many ballots and these are the votes as when we do a hand count, but I don't, I would like to talk to the Board of Elections about that and I would ask the city attorney, I can't see any reason why we couldn't do that. Maybe he needs to think about that a little bit.
Well, no, I I would say, I mean, I I think it's fairly common for unofficial results to be provided to the extent that they're available. But I think just as a a general word of caution for this election, caution might be wrong, we're just awareness. This is going to be the first time that the city's done something like this. So everybody's going to have to bear with us as we go through this process. Under not just doing it through mail and ballot voting, but most likely also counting under pandemic related restrictions, which will slow down the process significantly. If you if you saw what the county went through back in June, it is a very involved process with, you know, all types of restrictions on how people can move and where they're counting and how they share ballots and things like that. So it it just takes longer.
Yeah, and I'm not advocating that the timing be changed. I just think to the extent that it's possible to give unofficial results sooner, I think, you know, we don't want to have it so long that people's confidence in the results is in any way negatively affected. That's the only concern that I would have, but that's fine. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All right, seeing none. Will the clerk call the vote, please? Councilmember Kovar. Councilmember Dibala.
Yes.
Councilmember Kostick.
Yes.
Councilmember Siemens.
Hi.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Cersei.
Yes.
Mayor Stewart. Yes. Okay, so why don't we just keep rolling on into our work session and continue with the election stuff and then after we're done with the election, we'll move on to the treaty resolution ordinance. And so the next thing up on the work session is the ordinance amending the election code to accommodate vote by mail. Now, if there's anything that the city clerk or the city attorney want to raise, and actually I should ask the city clerk, did were we joined tonight by anyone from the Board of Elections that I should recognize?
We are. We have Arthur David Olson here and the board does have a recommendation related to the the deadline for receipt for consideration of ballots that are mailed by election day. So Mr. Arthur David Olson, are you, would you like to read the statement from the Board of Elections?
I can go ahead and read that if I can find it here on my Victrola. And I have found it on my Victrola. Thanks for your patience. And you should eventually be receiving this as well in written form from the Chair of the Board.
Yeah, it it in fact, it is posted on the website as well now.
So since the recommendation of the Tacoma Park Board of Elections, BOE or the Board, to move to all mail voting for the 2020 city elections, the Board has continued to consider the mechanics for switching to all mail elections. The BOE would like to provide a brief update on new recommendations on specific aspects of the election, especially those regarding changes to the city charter code. BOE also acknowledges that additional clarity on the election process is still needed and will be forthcoming. Latest updates for the council are as follows. First, on the deadline for ballots, the BOE considered the deadline for ballots to be received if the deadline for voters to place ballots in the mail is election day. The BOE would like to provide as much time as possible for ballots who arrive so as not to disenfranchise voters, while also ensuring that results from the election can be certified within a reasonable timeframe. As proposed in the charter amendment, the date for certification would be the Wednesday following the election day, eight days. The BOE recommends that the deadline for receipt of ballots be the Monday following election day. That's six days. And then on mailing of ballots, the BOE noted the election details set forth by the governor for the Maryland state and federal elections. The state will continue to open in person voting locations as normal, will mail absentee ballot request forms to every voter. The Tacoma Park BOE still recommends mailing each voter a ballot directly and not following the state's procedures. We'll continue to provide further updates to the council and we look forward to any feedback.
And Mayor Stewart, if I may add one thing to that, or just, I just want to be very clear, even though we've said it before, but that ballots that come in after election day must have been postmarked on or before election day. They can't be mailed after election day and they have to come in the mail. They can't be delivered after election day except by the postal service. We just want to make sure that that's very clear.
Mm hmm. Okay.
So with that in mind, you could then review the the city attorney perhaps could review the the ordinance, the proposed ordinance to amend the code.
Thank you. And and as we indicated last week, the mail in voting, mail in ballot voting additions are designed to provide for the option to conduct an election entirely by mail and ballot voting with additional aspects of traditional voting that we would be required to have to service people that would not be able to participate by mail and ballot voting. But it is also designed to allow for an election, what I'll call a traditional election, to take place with people participating by mail and ballot. All designed to provide flexibility and to account for the circumstances in which we likely will find ourselves this November. I think that there are a number of things that will be familiar to you because many of the much of the process that we took from other portions of the code to include primarily the absentee ballot portion so that they would be consistent with that. There are additional provisions that were necessary just to frame it for the purposes of getting the mail in ballots out to everyone. One of the things that the board and the city clerk are still working on is the timing for getting the ballots mailed out prior to the election along with additional notifications and reminders. And but everything else is largely consistent with how we would have proceeded with absentee balloting in the past. There are other changes in the ordinance that were done for the purposes, purposes of being consistent and you will note those where relevant in what is before you.
Thank you for that overview. Are there any questions for the city attorney or Board of Elections or our city clerk on this? Not seeing any. Oh, yeah, there is one hand. Councilwoman Kostick.
Yeah, thank you. Um, first of all, thank you very much. I I like the idea of extending the amount of time that we have to receive the ballots in the mail. I think that makes a lot of sense and resolves some of the issues I've been seeing coming out of other places where people haven't had as much time. And there've been some issues with postmarking and some other things. So I think that makes a lot of sense and the eight days seems like a logical amount of time to allow for, you know, strange happenings and my, you know, ballots getting lost in the mail for a little while and still being able to to get into the city. I was just briefly looking at the absentee ballots section in the existing code. And I just had a couple of questions about how that interacted with the new mail in provisions and the absentee provisions. I I assume most people will not need an absentee ballot, but there might be some people who will be traveling during that time and wouldn't be able to get the mail mailed ballot or are away from their home for some reason. And so I just wanted to make sure that you had taken a look and that the provisions in Section 520 regarding absentee ballots still made sense, given the mail in provisions. I I think one of them was allowing people to request an absentee ballot within seven days of the election, which I think makes a lot of sense, but I also don't know how that interacts with the timing of also mailing out the mail mailed ballot. And and I don't know if you've considered that a little bit. And then also there was some language there about allowing people to request an absentee ballot until the day of the election as well as the tallying of absentee ballots being three days after election day, if I recall correctly. So I just wanted to make sure that all of that corresponded appropriately with the new provisions. So I just wanted to make sure that all of that corresponded appropriately with the new provisions.
We have, we did look at that. I think we probably should look at the timing of it on the back end in terms of how we're going to be tallying them. It's definitely worth considering making sure that they're consistent. One of the things that we have to keep in mind, too, is that we need to evaluate this in the context of both a mostly vote-by-mail election and one that is more traditional. And there are ways to handle, you know, let's say a scenario where you get, somebody gets a mail-in ballot and they get an absentee ballot. We can handle that on the back end through the counting process. It's, you know, I don't think we're going to be able to eliminate that problem entirely because we're setting up the potential for two different ways of conducting an election here. But it's, we absolutely should look at it and will look at it.
I can say that we already, of course, have to review the absentee ballots we received to ensure that we only receive at most one from any individual voter. We already have done that in the past, so we're experienced with that, and we'd be applying the same sort of process when both absentee and mail-in ballots come. So there should not be any problem with allowing folks to request absentee ballots even after the mail-in ballots have been mailed out.
Okay. And so if I'm understanding correctly, the idea is that the language that's put in place here would be longstanding and would apply both to this immediate election and future elections so that if we decide to do another mail-in election, it will work. But if we decide to go back to a more traditional election, that it would work as well.
That's correct. That's my understanding of the intent.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Dibala.
Yes, thank you. Just a couple of quick questions to make sure that I am reading this correctly and understanding what I said earlier. So the first question is, I want to make sure I got this straight. So the current thinking is that a ballot must be postmarked or put in one of the drop boxes by the day of the election. Then it has six days to be received and eight days to be counted, and then the total certified. If I got the timing right here? Yes. Okay, thank you. Just making sure I got that straight. And then the question arose for me when I read the section about what do you do if you lose your ballot or can't find it? So on the day of the election, if someone realizes they can't find their ballot, what do they do? And what does it mean to have to sign a certification? Is that the phrase? That they're, that they, that they are asking for a second ballot? Could someone walk us through that, please?
Yes, you want to, I mean, I can answer the theoretical if you want to answer the practical. But there's two options theoretically speaking. They could get another replacement mail-in ballot, and of course, they can always vote provisionally if need be.
Okay, which would require showing up somewhere in person?
Either way, most likely, if they're doing it the day of election.
It's going to be in person, yeah. And did I read correctly that there's some kind of certification you have to sign? And so again, that implies in person.
So with respect to the replacement mail-in ballot, there would be a, an affidavit that would be filled out.
Thank you.
And I, basically explaining what happened. And having not gone through an election cycle with the city before, but typically provisional ballots have a similar type explanation for what happened. So and that's really the only way you can do it and substantiate what's going on with the ballots.
That's a good analogy to refer back to provisional ballots, which people are much more familiar with. So you do have to sign something there. That, that's, I think, my question. Thank you. I was just trying to walk through what that would look like for a typical voter.
Great. Thank you so much. And I just have one question. I don't have, it's not necessarily on the ordinance or what we're looking at, but I just didn't know if the Board of Elections had thought anymore about where we may put drop-off locations for ballots, or is that something you're still considering?
The board did discuss that at its most recent meeting, and we're somewhat worried about that because obviously there are heavy security requirements for those drop-off boxes. You do not want people to be able to take the ballots away. You do not want people to be able to destroy the ballots by throwing something into the drop box. So a great deal of care is needed, and that suggests to us that you're going to need to have a relatively small number of drop-off boxes rather than a larger number. The city clerk has mentioned the possibility of placing a drop-off box in the police lobby area, which is obviously a place where the security is good enough to ensure that people's votes don't get lost. But our sense is that we really need to be careful about the security of the ballots before and place that over convenience.
Okay. So may I add something?
Yeah, sure.
To that, at the meeting, we did, there was a little bit of discussion about the idea, though, of having drop boxes at certain hours on certain days. So they would have to be accompanied, though. So it's not a drop box you could just leave there. Someone would have to accompany the drop box so that, let's say, we had it at the rec center, if the rec center's open, or in one of the apartment building lobbies on a couple of afternoons, and people could just drop off their ballots or afternoons or evenings. So we can envision some of that sort of thing so that people will have more of a chance to just drop the ballot rather than put it in the mail. But we have to work out the details and.
So board members may be getting to tour the city in the fall.
Yeah.
Great. Yeah, I think the, at least in the last, the primary election, the one, I don't know all the details of how they kept the one outside the civic, the civic center in Veterans Plaza in downtown Silver Spring, but that was very convenient. And just want to note, I have some real concerns about putting a ballot drop-off box in the police department. So if it's maybe overnight, but having people need to go into the police department and drop something off, I could see. I'm not sure. I'll just sit with that for a little bit, but I'd like to maybe have the board think of a more central, easier, not that our police department's too hard to get into, but possible location. So.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions on elections before we turn the page to trees? All right, seeing none. We will now get into trees. Let's first get into the resolution, and I'm going to ask to see if I'm, do I have permission to share my screen?
Yes.
You should. See, I have the right documents up here. Is anyone seeing anything?
Yeah.
What do you all?
Just the top of the, just the title.
Yeah.
It's not a full page. Expand the document.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is that better?
Yes.
Can we do it that way, or is that too small?
For me.
Is that good?
I would go one size bigger, to be honest, where you had it before.
If I do that, then I can't see my own notes.
Oh, that's not good. Okay, nevermind.
The trick was like sharing my screen, and then I can't see my own stuff. All right, maybe I can make it a little better. Okay. All right, um, before we delve in, I just, I wanted to say a few words about the resolution, where we are in this process. First, I want to give a huge thank you, thank you to everyone who has worked not only on the resolution but on the ordinance. This has been a lot of effort by many people over the last few years, and I know especially many of our residents have been really thinking about this for a long time and providing great input. And so and I hope they will continue to do so. And I just want to say, as we consider the resolution and the tree ordinance, we know our work is very far from done. In fact, I look at this as our work just beginning. Because what we have talked about over the last few years on this is really shifting the way the city approaches our urban forest. Traditionally, the way we've done it before is we have focused on what the city can do on right-of, in right-of-ways and on public property. And quite frankly, our ordinance has been mostly about what residents can't do and how they will be penalized if they take down trees. And so we are now taking a much different stance. We are proactively stating a new approach in which we are saying we have a shared community approach to ensuring we have a healthy urban forest. And I just want to underscore, because I think the last couple of weeks, we've gotten real into the details, and excuse the pun, I think we've gotten lost in the trees for the forest, that this is a really big deal. We stated in our resolution that we are expanding beyond the current focus on tree removal and protection permits to a broader approach, recognizing shared community responsibility and the public values of trees, and incorporating new strategy to meet today's urban forest climate and ecological health and human safety challenges. And so to facilitate moving in this direction, this is the first time that we have talked about, not just us as a city council, but our city government of requiring a multi-year plan for our urban forest and putting in place a pilot project to increase the planting of trees on private property, particularly to address inequities in our current system and to address racial disparities in tree coverage in our city, and really have a focus on those parts of our city that are lacking in tree coverage at the moment. And we really haven't done this before. You know, again, as what we've done before is sort of planted trees as a city. We have some very good programs that we've all talked about how we can improve them. And really, you know, looking at how we put in place permitting and other restrictions on residents. So this is a lot of change, and I think we can all feel it because it's been a lot to really change our ordinance and really think through what we want this resolution to say and do. And so as we get into it, I kind of wanted to step back and just say a big thank you to everyone and to really focus us on where we had started and what our ultimate goal was here, which is really shifting how we do the work of protecting and moving towards a healthy urban forest in our community. So thank you for allowing me to do that. And so now let's move on to the resolution. I thought what we would do tonight is walk through it so we can discuss the different pieces of it, and people can talk about different sections, and we can do hand votes on that. And Councilwoman Dibala, did you want to say some big picture stuff before we got into it?
Yes, thank you. Just very quickly. Just a refresher for both the council and for anybody listening. The structure of the resolution is that it sets out some goals, some over, over, some broad goals, and as the mayor said, this is the first time we're doing this, plus the nature of the goals is, is pretty different. There's some principles for how the programs is implemented, and there are some actions, specific actions, we are directing the city to take, and a section on planning for the future. So as we go through and we hit these different potential word changes that people are suggesting, that's the overall approach here, just to remind us. And I think there are sort of three themes to the suggest, many of the suggested four themes to many of the suggested changes. One is the discussion about the goals themselves, particularly about the no net loss of canopy and how that interacts with the other two very important goals of equity and biodiversity and increased native species. So that's one thing to think about. There's been a lot of public comment recently about the focus on native species. And when we, when we get to that point, it might be good to review what we have in the resolution now that wasn't in there a couple of weeks ago, just to, to inform the discussion. And third, there's, there's been some comments recently from the Committee on the Environment and others about on-the-ground inventories or, or counting or assessing not just the canopy, but assessing the, the the, the trees from, assessing the trees, the tree and urban forest health from another perspective from the ground. So that, that's the setup, I think, for going into the details. Thank you.
Okay. Great. All right, so let's walk through. We have a number of whereas clauses, and I think there's no changes here that people have submitted to date. So I'm just going to ask, were there any other changes? I think some of these that you see here are just, we like the word whereas, so we had it a couple of times that we didn't need it, so we took it out. Any, any other change, any suggested changes to the whereas clauses? Or else I will start at line 128. Okay. Seeing none, we will look now, as Councilwoman Dibala pointed out, there are a number of sections in the resolve clauses. The first is the three-pronged goals that are outlined in the resolution. The first talks about no net loss of the urban forest canopy. The second talks about increased biodiversity and the focus on planting of native species. And then the last one talks about the increased tree canopy coverage and working on that in a participatory process and focusing on neighborhoods with less coverage. So why don't we, we can walk down these? And so I see no one has put in any changes on the, the first bullet. So moving down to the second, this is change the language from what we had considered before last week. If folks want to take a minute and look at that second bullet and seeing if anyone has any other suggested changes here.
I'll say a couple of words about it.
Please.
And is that okay?
Yeah, go ahead, sorry.
So there's been a lot of discussion about native species and their importance as, in particular, as habitat for a very wide range of, in particular, insect species and other animals as well. And that desire to emphasize more heavily native species has also connected up in a, in a certain way with the notion around how with the climate changing, some species that maybe were previously not adapted to this area would become so. And I think a key part of this is that what we're calling for, not only in the resolution, but also in the ordinance, when we get to that, is a species list that would be used, and that could change based on input from outside experts and from the community. And so what I see is that over time, there would be changes that would be made. And so in some cases, species could be added or taken off of the list for planting in the city depending upon those kinds of changes. But to me, what this provision says is that there's a focus on plenty of native species. That means they're most heavily emphasized. But where appropriate, meaning in certain circumstances, certain sites, certain cases, the climate adapted species could be used as well. And I've had a lot of long conversations with people about the significance of, of those two components, but as I see it, and any of my colleagues are welcome to, to jump in on it as well, this says that native species will be emphasized heavily, but in other cases, some that weren't native but are, but through the process of adaptation and the way climate is changing, it could also be brought into the, brought into the process. And I will say later in the resolution, where there's a crucial part of the resolution, which is we charge the staff to develop a longer-term plan. I may want to make a suggestion there because in that section, it talks about everything else that's in these goals and it doesn't really mention native species there. So I, when we get down to that spot, I might have one very brief phrase that I would suggest adding, but that's how I see this. And I would say when we started that, we didn't have as strong language in terms of focusing on the planting of native species.
If I can just jump in as well, I, I think I have sort of a similar perspective in terms of appreciating the, the importance of native species. And I, I think it's been really useful to receive the emails and discussion, have the discussions about that applying to habitat, which is not something as, as a non, you know, ecologist, not somebody who was trained in these things. I sort of knew in the back of my mind, but hadn't really thought through thoroughly. So I think that's been a useful part of the discussion to think through. And the other thing I, I think is, is going to be important as we develop the species list and think through what trees are most appropriate is the different planting locations and the fact that trees that are planted in the right of way, for example, where there's regular salting of the streets and pollution and cars driving by and dogs and kids walking next to them and potentially bumping into them. Maybe the species for that location may be a different type of species than for parks and, and private property where there's a little more protection and some different environmental aspects than along the streets. So as much as possible, I'd like to see us emphasize those native species, but I do understand especially related to climate change and other factors that there may be some particular situations where there's some flexibility. So I look forward to having those discussions more as we learn a little bit more about what those, that species list will include and what the recommendations are from staff.
Great, thank you. And I'll just add, I just want to add my thanks to all the residents on, who've provided information on this project, some very interesting readings as well and conversations. And I just want to particularly thank Councilmember Kovar for having lots of long conversations and probably knows more about native species now than any of us do. So thank you for that. And I just want to agree with my colleagues. I think this is, this language is a good place where we've landed and I look forward to continuing learning and discussing the, the, the list of the trees that we do plant in the city and continue.
If I can just mention one other thing, I, I don't think that I know more about native species than, than everybody else, but I've talked a lot.
More than me.
I talked a lot about how the resolution and the ordinance are meshed together. And in that context, I forgot to mention, when we do get to the resolution, while there's already some language in it, to the ordinance, excuse me, while there's already some language in it about native species, we're proposing in three additional spots in the ordinance that the native species concept in some cases, again, allied with the climate adapted species get highlighted or called out in three other spots in the ordinance. So again, the two work together and in addition to this language, and if I potentially ask for one, one additional phrase further down in the resolution, there will be three other spots where we're hoping to add a little more language on native species as well in the ordinance. So just stay tuned for that when we get to that. Thank you.
Great. Oh, I see a hand. Councilman DeBala?
Yes, thank you. I think Councilwoman Cover just said a good bunch of what I was planning to point, just point out now about the interplay of the ordinance and the, and the resolution. But I did want to address one thing that came up specifically in comments tonight about ecologically productive species. So first I point out that in the principles, which are right behind the goals, one of the, the very, yes, the very first one talks about ecological services. In other words, ecologically productive species as a principle, a guiding principle for what we're doing. And then I would also say that that my view is, is, is the species list is the action and native species that are ecologically productive are going to be on the list and will be as in, if I'm, if I, if this goes through, my view is that the focus will really be on that and the, and the implementation of that, it will be through the species list and we're going to get to that further down the evening when we talk about the changes, the proposed changes to the species list wording. Thank you.
Okay, then moving down to the next bullet. The, let's see, we had an edit to this and I, I put in parentheses some language because I'm not sure there's, well, it, I want to discuss two parts of it. So the, and this, the change here goes back to what we actually had more akin to what we had last week, and I apologize for somewhat of a clerical mistake in the placement of some words, but going back to basically what we had discussed in our last work session, this should read increased tree canopy coverage. Again, in, to the extent feasible in neighborhoods with less coverage. What was added after our conversation last week, and thank you to the residents who've provided background information on this, is using a participatory process for planning to create an equitable distribution, distributed tree canopy over time and collaborating with members of the, of those neighborhoods in the planning of tree plantings and in efforts to support and we have to have a conversation, do we use manage versus maintain existing mature trees? So why don't we take this in two parts? The first is increase the tree canopy coverage to the extent feasible in neighborhoods with less coverage. I'll, I'll say how I feel about this. I, I would like to not include the phrase to the extent feasible. For me, this is the heart of the work that we're doing right now and is to increase tree canopy and the health of our urban forest, particularly in those places that have not been basically like either ignored or haven't really gotten the, the services they need for particular, maybe a variety of reasons. But that to me is really the focus we need to have. And I, I don't necessarily think we need the, to the extent feasible in there. So I don't know if other people want to discuss that or agree without taking that out or a cats member Siemens? You're on mute, Councilmember Siemens.
I sound better that way. I, I agree with you wholeheartedly. That's, you know, one of the major reasons why we're doing this. So I agree with striking that.
Councilwoman Kostic?
I agree. I would also like to get rid of the phrase to the extent feasible. And I also want to point out that I think it's important to recognize, and I'm not sure if there's language, I can try to think through more if it seems appropriate for us to add more, but I think when we say in neighborhoods with less coverage, I think that also applies to our discussion regarding multifamily buildings. And I, I would say I consider that to be a neighborhood potentially, but there may be situations where there is a multifamily building that is lacking in tree coverage, but perhaps is not in and of itself a neighborhood, quote unquote, because it's, it's not a particularly large building. So I, I, I want to just keep in mind that for me, it's important for us to emphasize increasing tree canopy coverage in these locations with, with less coverage. And I think that does include multifamily buildings as well as neighborhoods in the more general sense.
Great, thank you. Councilwoman CRC?
I just want to say ditto. I agree. I think we should, we should eliminate the language to the extent feasible. I think that it's important for us to not think that our first bullet of no net loss to the urban forest canopy kind of in some way contradicts this idea of increasing the tree canopy coverage in neighborhoods with less coverage. I think that we can be very purposeful and strategic in identifying areas in wards and locations that don't have as much tree canopy to prioritize our limited resources for planting. And then, you know, I, I, so I, I, I get how some may say, well, if we can't ensure that there's no net loss, then how does that relate to, you know, increasing tree canopy coverage, right? Because those two things conceptually can, can, on the surface appear to be conflicting, but I think the biggest thing is that for three, we're committing to prioritizing plantings in the, in the areas that we know have less coverage right now and involving to Councilmember Kostic's point, members in the community who are often not consulted or don't have the property ownership rights in order to make decisions around planting. So this is just identifying the purposeful planting of trees in neighborhoods with less coverage and involving those who typically are not involved in the process. So I, I would, I would take the to the extent feasible out.
I think that's for council members who would want to take it out, but I want to make sure Councilman DeBala and Kovar, did you want to speak to this as well?
Yeah, yes, I would.
All right, Councilman.
And yes, and yes, I would too. So I, I, I would, I would be very happy to take, to take it out. And, and the way that I see it is that in order to maintain the overall urban forest, we know things are going to be, trees will die, we know trees will be removed. So the focus, the targeting on neighborhoods and multifamily areas that need a boost is the way that we want to maintain the canopy with the plantings that we need to do to do that. That, that's how I see it. I would, on behalf of, I just would like to remind the council that the To Be on Environment sent in a comment that they were looking for an overall increase in the, not no net loss, but an actual increase in the tree, in the tree canopy goal, in the urban forest goal. And we talked about this a couple of times in the last few weeks. I feel that personally, I feel that maintaining what we have overall, we should be, that would be great. And the Tree Commission made that comment in October, that that's a realistic and ambitious goal. To go further in their view was, was not realistic. So we all talked about this. I just wanted to, in case there was someone who wanted to respond to the council, to the Committee on the Environment comment, I wanted to put that out there on that, that we did get that from them in the last few days. But I'm fine with with taking it to the extent feasible. And I want to say to Councilmember Kostic that further down in the principles, it specifically mentions renters as one of the groups that needs to be consulted to address inequities. So thank you.
Great. Councilwoman Kovar?
Yes, thank you. A couple of, a couple of points. One, I'm fine getting rid of to the extent feasible. I don't object to that. So I, as I do want to just inquire, so what we, the version of this that we had until earlier today, I suppose, just said increased tree canopy coverage using a participatory process to work on the, the equitability. And it should, it should say, by the way, to create an equitability distributed tree canopy, not a equitability. But are, are we saying that we didn't actually tentatively agree to, to take out this language? Or are we saying we want to put it back?
To put it back, it was, it was honestly a, what the language we ended the last work session with was increased tree canopy coverage. Something actually, I think either Councilwoman Kostic or DeBala had it before for me, in neighborhoods with less coverage. And I will own the clerical mistake. I added using a participatory process for planning to create and I put it in the wrong place. And so it, the, but last week in the work session, the language that we had agreed to is it's increased tree canopy coverage in neighborhoods with currently with less coverage. It was not an increased tree canopy coverage overall.
That's what we agreed to then, then I'm not objecting to it, but just a couple of points I would like to make. Number one, I don't think that the first goal and the third goal are actually in conflict, although conceptually they could seem like it because essentially what we're saying in the first goal is that's a floor. No net loss means we will not, we will try not to go below. It's a goal. We're trying to go below that number. If you say you're not going to go below something, it doesn't mean you can't go above it. So that's the floor. And then the efforts to increase it are, are what appears in the third bullet point. But I guess the distinction between what we, what we thought we had and now that we've changed because of the clerical, clerical error is to the extent that we are able to increase, the focus of that will be in neighborhoods with less coverage as opposed to citywide. Is that, is that what we're talking about here?
Yes, that the focus would be, yes.
So does that mean that we couldn't have any increase elsewhere? Or is this, the idea is we're targeting the neighborhoods that really need it?
In my mind, it's we're targeting the areas that we really need it and that have been underserved prior to this.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Smith?
I just want to go on record, removing to the extent feasible. You know, we can't run a deficit as jurisdiction, so that is a decision made up by a future council, whether or not there's money available. So it makes sense to remove that. But the question I have is participatory process. What does that? What do you envision? I know what it means, but how do you envision a participatory process?
So that was, some of the residents shared some of the best practices, I believe, and I, I thought they shared it with the full council, but if not, I can share it out. Sorry, there's a lot of emails on trees this week. And I believe it was, sorry, I read a lot on trees too this week. I believe it was in Baltimore City and it's, it's, Councilwoman Kostic is shaking her head yes. And it's a model for how they went into the community and other people who also read the same article or similar ones like this. And I think it goes back to what Councilwoman CRC has been talking about a lot, like actually engaging with people. Asking them, you know, what do they want? What, you know, maybe why didn't they want a tree last time the city was planting a tree in front of their house? What is it? What support do they need? You know, to plant a tree on their property or in the right of way in front of their house. So it's not us, the city just going out and saying, okay, we're planting a tree here. Yes or no? It's actually engaging with people first, understanding what people in different neighborhoods want and actually working together with them.
I guess I wasn't explicit in what I was trying to say. I, I, I read Councilwoman DeBala's article about Detroit and Detroit did something similar. And but the city's common park has not historically been good at getting people that are black and brown to participate in these programs. So what, yes, we're saying participatory process, but what would we do differently than what we've done in the past to actually execute this idea?
Well, I don't believe this resolution, we need to outline all those things. And I think as Councilwoman DeBala said before, this is the goal section. And then what we down below, where we asked the city staff by March of 2021 to provide a develop a pilot project. I'm seeing them, depending on those of us who are Um, I'm seeing them, depending on those of us who are, um, on the council, um, on March 2021, the new council, that the city staff would come back and report back to us on that. And at that time, we would have that conversation about the details. Okay?
And I would say in some respects, although the COVID pandemic has disrupted this, but one worthwhile model to think about is the engagement plan that we had developed and, had, have a contract on, connected to the, uh, New Hampshire Avenue Rec Center where the consultant that we had, selected and, and I understand, of course, that that's been delayed or disrupted due to COVID, but they had people with, knowledge and expertise in three other languages at least, were going to be part of that effort. And, and I think, having outside help, um, from a firm that's done this kind of thing before, which they did, uh, and with the language expertise as well, that might be the, another component of how, could really move in a better way to genuinely solicit, opinions and views from some of the neighborhoods that we're talking about.
Okay. Um, alright, so can Councilman Devala, I just want to, we have lots to go through tonight. Can we move on? Or do you want to, you're on, you're on mute. Sorry.
I, sorry. Uh, I, I was going to add, but I, I'll, I'll just, I'll just hold it and say, I understand the, the, the lack of specific, specific action to, to correct with some of the C's, things that, need a little, little fixing. I, I get that and I think we, I at least don't actually know yet. That's why I'm sending around articles about what I, has and hasn't worked in other places. And, and I agree that the planning process is where we need to really focus on, coming up with some more specifics.
Okay, cool. So I'm going to accept the in neighborhood with less coverage as the change. Um, uh, now I think if, um, Ms. Braithwaite is with us, our Public Works Director, um, ask you to help chime in on the debate of do we talk about, manage versus maintain? We started this conversation, I think, last week and I'd like to, um, make sure that the council is giving you clear direction and that our intent is clear in this. And so if you could tell us the, what, how you, as a professional, um, in this area, um, see the, the different terms, manage and maintain.
Yeah, I do, uh, see them as, uh, having a specific meaning and, and, uh, very different between the two of them. Um, a lot of it will, will be based on what the council sees as, city staff's role in this. Um, and there are a lot of different ways to provide support. Um, support can be provided through education, through outreach, through workshops. Uh, support can actually also be provided through dollars. We'll give you money to do X, Y, Z. So, uh, it, when I read this sentence, that's the first question that comes to mind, what type of support is envisioned? Um, when you are managing something, I see it more as, um, kind of oversight, keeping track of things, knowing what's where, which trees are where, how to do certain things. Maintain, I see more as an action word, where you're actually doing pruning, doing watering, doing maintenance work. So, um, that's, that's the difference I see between the words manage and maintain. And, um, then also the difference, uh, meanings of support. So there's a, a number of things that I myself, I'm not clear about, when I read that last half of the sentence in terms of the goal that the council has for this, this effort.
Councilwoman Kostic?
Yeah, um, to me, this goes a little bit towards, um, Councilmember Smith's point, which I think is that we don't necessarily have this super well-defined at this point in time, but I also think, that some of that is, is going to be ideally defined through the discussions with, community members and identifying what their needs are. So to me, what I was thinking when I was, was looking at this was that it would be collaborating with people in the community, to identify, um, what sort of needs there are for, um, both for tree plantings, but also for support and potentially maintenance. And that those things might go towards increasing the tree canopy and improving the tree canopy in areas where there is less, coverage. So to me, part of it is, uh, just better understanding, um, what the needs are and, what people's interests and priorities are, um, so that we can identify kind of where the priorities go. Um, and what is most, most effective and most, um, important in terms of what the, the city does. And it might not be direct city pruning or maintenance, but it might be like, educational materials or outreach or, uh, you know, in cases, um, for maybe low income homeowners providing, some assistance, financial assistance, um, with maintaining trees or other, other aspects that, um, I don't feel like I can necessarily identify in a clear way right now, but might come out through those discussions. So to me, it's more of a priority to explore and better understand. And I think right now we've talked a little bit about how our existing tree ordinance and our policies, tend to focus a little bit more on the removal and the planting, but there isn't a whole lot kind of in the middle. And so I just like to explore more of what we can do in that space. And it might be that there are serious challenges and there are things we can't do, but I'd like to just understand better, what we could do or what the opportunities are.
Yeah, I agree with that. That's what I was thinking. So I guess it's, maintain sounds more appropriate. Um, and I'm seeing Councilwoman Devala's head nod. Uh, but again, this is all premised on the idea that we need to, ask people first and not make assumptions, um, about what they need. So seeing no objections, I'm going to take out manage and we'll keep maintain. Okay, um, now I just, I want to, um, ask all my colleagues also, um, as you know, I, I mentioned this last week. Um, for, for me, I've had, um, when I look at these three goals, the, the ones that are really, I think most important are actually number two and number three as we do this work and, I, I feel like our conversations over the last few weeks have really focused on the, um, the no net loss of the tree canopy overall and LiDAR measuring and other things, which, I think sometimes just, it does not also keep front and center the need to protect and increase, the overall health of our urban forest, which gets to some of the conversation we were just having now regarding, um, making sure that we're, um, really educating people and protecting the mature trees we have now. Um, in addition, it's, it's also efforts like, um, people are doing now by taking the IV off of trees and doing that work. Um, and so, and, and I also think that, uh, for me, the third bullet is the one that, really gets at the heart of a lot of, um, the work that I think we should be doing in the short term and sets us up long terms to really meet our goals. And so I would actually, um, ask council if, um, people would be okay if we took actually the, third bullet here and swapped it with the first one. So the third goal came the first goal. The second one stays where it is and the no net loss of urban forest canopy actually became the third goal. So our, our emphasis out of the box was really on increasing the tree canopy coverage, um, in neighborhoods with less coverage and this collaboration on tree planting and maintenance in the future. So just swapping bullet one and bullet three is my proposal. Objections, support?
I'm fine with that. How's that for economical statement?
Alright. I'll clean this up later and this time I'll make sure I'm paying more attention. Um, alright. Moving down then, um, we did, so we'll keep maintaining. Um, line 121, um, we just had the addition of city of, um, measure, the reassessment of the urban canopy tree citywide through LiDAR or similar technology every three years. And I think the, that was actually an addition by, I think, the city manager, just so, we're not so specific if there's another new technology that we find. Um, everybody okay with that one? Alright, um, then, then we get down to the section on, um, directing staff, um, by March of 2021. Um, first to provide a multi-year plan in line with the goals and principles of this resolution that we've outlined. Um, there are a couple of changes here. Um, one of them, um, Councilwoman Devala and I talked about adding a provide recommendation on best measurement and benchmarks to use, to measure urban forest health and maintenance. Um, and the Director of Public Works may be looking at this, like, what is this? There may be better language for this, so let me tell you what our intent is, um, on this one. Again, I'll just say for my own, um, reading this and thinking a lot and talking to residents, um, about this, it, it felt like we were, we were getting very focused on the LiDAR measurements and the tree canopy, um, and, um, too focused on that and not looking at necessarily, um, overall health of the urban forest or, um, what it, really what, uh, uh, what it means to have, um, and be planting trees and other things and not just counting, uh, or looking at the percentage of the canopy. Um, because we also know it takes a while for trees to, um, as when we went through the last, um, presentation on the LiDAR, how long it takes for trees to actually, get mature enough to be counted by, um, and, uh, in the LiDAR. And so, um, I know there are, other ways to look at, um, trees, tree coverage. Um, the Director of Public Works talked about last week. There could be other benchmarks like having, planting X number of trees each year or other things, our ways to benchmark, how we're actually, um, improving or, um, uh, protecting the, um, health of the urban forest. So that was the intent of this bullet. I don't know, Councilwoman Devala, if you want to add to it and then we can fix the wording. So it makes sense to our Director of Public Works.
For me, this built a little, uh, a bit on the discussion we had last fall about web, the Committee on Environment's recommendation to do an on-the-ground citizen-led tree inventory. Well, that, for, not to summarize the discussion we had, that, that didn't, that didn't, that specific notion didn't, didn't meet with a lot of success last fall, but the idea that you want to look at the overall canopy from the top, you also want to look on the ground. You want to look at what's actually going on, perhaps starting with street trees because, um, that might be the quickest and simplest way to, to, to get started. Thus, the two bullets for me, one, what are the benchmark, benchmarks besides LiDAR that we want to look at? And can we do, can we, can we start by identifying and prioritizing, city street trees? Um, and again, we talked about this in the fall, but, it, when I went back and looked, I realized, and I listened to Committee on Environment, uh, members, I realized that we had, no one had ever actually proposed to put it in here. So that's what we're trying to do here now. Thank you.
Well, any comments or questions or ways that the, I know we're, we're just throwing this at the Director of Public Works. And so I don't know if you have any reactions to it or want to think about it.
Yeah, the issue of inventory is a very dicey one. Um, and I, and for years and years, we have, had our arborists speak very strongly about the limits, uh, of inventories. The challenge with an inventory, of course, is what we feel like we would be able to do is public space. Um, not certainly citywide tree canopy on private property. The cost would be astronomical. And access to people's property would be problematic. So what we're looking at is an inventory on public space, in a practical way. Um, that's, that can be a beneficial thing. However, we already know from our own analysis, that street tree planting is a very small percentage of where we have and where we're going to grow our urban forest canopy. So we would be putting a lot of money into an inventory, um, that will not be where we can get the biggest bang for the buck. So I would just offer that kind of, um, reaction, which is, uh, again, something I've heard from the arborists that we've had on staff in the past. The other challenge with, uh, inventory is it is, uh, it is out of date, almost, uh, immediately after it's, it's developed. So it, it requires, uh, a great deal of upkeep in order to make it a meaningful document. It's a great snapshot. It tells you kind of what your, uh, canopy analysis is, what your variety, uh, of trees is. Uh, but again, it's a very limited window in, into the public right-of-way trees. Um, so that, you know, it's just, uh, it's kind of a caution on that. Um, when I am looking at this resolution and trying to imagine our new arborist, um, developing program recommendations for this, they're basically going to be saying, so I can hire three or four people, right? Um, because that's the workload that something like this is going to entail. Um, so I think, you know, we're really going to have to kind of ground truth and, uh, and work the reality of this. Um, and hopefully they'll be able to, uh, tap into existing programs, uh, around the country as well as, uh, with, um, you know, folks here that are, uh, expert in these matters and, um, see how we might be able to, uh, do this, um, a little more effectively or efficiently. Uh, but, um, I, I do worry about the amount of cost for an inventory, um, where the real, um, future of our canopy is going to lie on planting on private property.
And I, I just want to be very specific. I particularly did not use the word inventory here. So I, I just, I was very, because I remember those conversations in, and so specifically, I, I, I am not necessarily talking about an inventory, but.
Can I offer a suggestion?
Mm-hmm.
Um, it sounds like from what Ms. Braithwaite is saying, that, um, in terms of the cost, it may be an issue if, if it says the best measurement and benchmarks to measure this. So what if you said recommendation on options for measurement and benchmarks to measure? Because that way, then, then I said, look, here's a, here's a cheap way, cheaper way.
And that's really what I meant, yeah. Was option, because it was provide recommendation on, yeah, that's a good, that's a good change. But it's really looking at what are the other things that we can do? And you know, kind of like the, the pluses and minuses and what each give us, um, in terms of looking at and being able to measure, our urban forest health. Um, because it, maybe we, given the principles and the, the goals that we have, we say, oh, well, that's actually the benchmark we need. It's not the LiDAR. It's, we, we think, you know, in order to do X, we need Y. Um, in the future. So, and again, it's provide recommendation. It's not, um, and maybe that should be, yeah, on options, yeah. So, uh, Councilmember Siemens. You're on mute, Councilmember Siemens.
I guess I don't speak often enough to train myself. Um, no, I was just going to, uh, speak and along the same lines as you and Councilmember Kovar were just talking. And that is that, you know, we, we don't need a perfect system. We need something better than we have now. And it kind of reminds me of, uh, when we first started to really look at a more scientific way of doing our street maintenance. Uh, we couldn't do a, um, we couldn't maintain an inventory of roads, uh, real well in the beginning. And the road surfaces were changing frequently, uh, similar to what we're just seeing with the tree canopy now. Um, but we did take snapshots every now and then to see kind of, you know, how we should be, uh, using our resources, and to help guide us. And as things got better and. And to help guide us. And as things got better and the problems kind of slowed down. The inventory became more reasonable to manage. So I support the way that we had. Thank you.
Any other comments or?
I have one comment. Could you say a little bit more about forest health and maintenance is and maintenance? Again, we are looking for recommendations on. On how to how to how to approach this is ma. The approach, the the measurement is maintenance. An appropriate word in here. Mayor, what were you thinking there?
Well, because I had a conversation with our Director of Public Works and her, and she gave me her definition of maintenance, which was sort of pruning water and other things. I was thinking it went here, we maybe we don't need it and we can just say to use to measure urban forest health, but. You know, maybe it's maybe it's it's an addition that confuses things, so we could take that out. Maybe that's better and just leave it at that. Is that better?
It is for me.
OK. OK, any other questions or thoughts? All right, these were the last suggested changes. Are there any other? Suggestions that did not or things people want to discuss that were not included in the document this afternoon?
I just wanted to mention one thing. We didn't talk about we're adding prioritized tree. Planting plan and map, right? And so I was thinking either. I mentioned this earlier, I mentioned this previously, that among the three key goals, the canopy and and. Racial equity, we don't where we get into right here, the directive to the staff, we don't talk at all about. The the native or the climate adapted plants. So I was thinking one of two or or climate adapted species. I was thinking one of two ways to do that, we could either say a prioritize city planting plan and map. With an appropriate focus on native and climate adapted species, or we could just have us one more. Sub-bullet, which would say ensure an appropriate focus on native and climate adapted species. So it doesn't have to be added to the other one, I don't want to jump onto someone else's language if they would rather not. I would say with an appropriate focus on native and climate adapt. Adapted species, it could either be there, it could be a zone board. And you're saying climate adapted species, not adaptive, climate adapted. And no, and. Adapted, not.
With an appropriate.
Focus. On native and climate adapted.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, right. So that could either be there or we could bump it down to another bullet and just say ensure an appropriate focus on native and climate adapted species. I'd be fine with either one.
Councilwoman Dibala, since you added the that bullet, do you have a preference?
Yes, in view of the fact that if there was one place in the city where native species might be least likely to be always well-suited. It would be street trees in the right of way. So I would say this is not the bullet to put in. I would propose, I would agree that it could be a separate bullet. The word ensure makes me a little nervous. But a bullet that talks about another. So we're so back up for a second, we are looking at a multi-year plan that advises us on a number of things. The biggest action, as we were discussing before, on native and climate adapted species is the species list and is replantings. So which one of these bullets focuses on replanting, that might be the place to put.
I didn't think one exactly. If the word ensure makes you nervous, we could say to help ensure an appropriate focus on.
Sorry, I did I not type, did we have? I'm not seeing the word. All right, so me, so tell me if this is what you're talking about to move. It up here.
Second bullet.
That would be fine.
OK.
That would be great.
And it would just say with an appropriate focus on native and climate adapted.
That'd be great.
Was I supposed to put ensure anywhere?
No.
OK.
That's a great suggestion, Councilmember Dibala, thank you.
Can I ask a question just to make sure I'm understanding? Something Cindy just said made me wonder, this prioritize city tree planting map, is that assumed to be a city right of way? Map or is this citywide?
I. Am I on? Yes, I would leave it to you, but personally, I was thinking, start small, look at street trees. But that would be something that you would want to, you would want to come back to us on, it would have to do with costs with what the to the the tree commission, what other, you know, what other folks think is the most useful thing to do first.
Yeah, well, if in order to, I mean, that. For a plan, it would be helpful, I I can see if we were going to do a multi-year plan on city right of way, we could very specifically identify which places we were going to go to first, second, third, you know, first year, second year, third year, because it's our right of way. You know, we have information about it, we know what trees are there. So that if you're looking for a very specific multi-year plan focused on type of tree, where the area is going to be in a map, I could see that coming through pretty pretty well together. With the with the other program about private tree planting, I mean, we can identify areas, but I think we'd be much less able to predict how successful those efforts were going to be. We're going to have to have a much broader flexibility to. The list of trees that are, you know, that will be appropriate, again, focusing on native. But with the street trees, we could say we're going to plant this, this, and this. If we're talking about encouraging private planting, we have to have a much bigger. Palette of trees to encourage and talk to people about planting. So it'd really be a very different, much more generalized. Thing than and then the city right of way where we have much more control and and detail that we could. Lay out in a year-by-year plan.
So it's it sounds like you are saying this this should apply, at least for now, to city trees. City, street trees and city and city. Property trees.
Yeah, right away. I mean, that that if your goal was to get a specific map and priority list of what we were going to plant where, we could best do that on in public space.
Yeah.
We can have a more general program, multi-year program for where we, where the areas of less canopy are and what kind of things we're going to do to promote planting on private property. But it would be a much more general. We wouldn't be able to have the specifics to that because. We don't know what's there, we don't know what people will be interested in, and we're going to have to really have a much broader. Broader approach.
And and again, my suggestion, based on what I think I understood of the. Residents who who have talked about it in the past is to focus first on the city plantings in the city properties, the city right of way.
So should I write N city property here?
I guess, yeah.
And right away?
Yeah, sure, that works for me.
Because I do see the the second, the pilot project is the one where we're exploring how we do and work with people on private property. Oh, Councilwoman seriously had her hand up, I'm sorry.
I know, I was just going to kind of echo that point of the city property and right of way. And I don't know to what extent, because I know the open space. Management plan, you know, we haven't seen that yet, but I could imagine, you know, not trying to necessarily reinvent the wheel, but incorporating things like. Tree planning plans as a part of implementation of those open space management ideas. So, you know, when you're talking about specific, you know, street closures or creating more public space, you know, what would be the tree planting? Plans that go along with that versus creating something new. So and again, in many cases, those open spaces would fall within the city's right of way, right? I don't think we're necessarily talking about, you know, maybe purchasing future property, but that would still be the city's property. So to me, that makes sense. And I think, you know, in terms of the tree planting plan and map. I I think it does make sense to kind of prioritize, you know, think of it as an evolving thing. So it would start with our right of way. But then as new projects come on board in terms of open space, it would grow. And then eventually we would know, not an inventory, but have a general idea of the overall. Tree plantings by the city in the city's right of way, right? So I I I just want to bring that point up, and I don't know, we could keep it pretty general here, but it might make sense behind the scenes when the plan comes, the plan comes together. To make it a little less like the the plan to somehow morph into some of these other activities that are happening across the city and a little less on public work, kind of maintain maintaining and updating this plan, if that makes sense.
Councilmember Kovar.
I just had one last question, I don't know, Mayor, whether whether yourself or potentially Ms. Braithwaite could answer this. But just in turn, before we leave this resolve clause area, which is the the staff directives. One of the things that I've heard in talking to people in the community is particular concern that when it comes to some of the equity components of this, that it not just be a a general statement of what we hope to do, but that there be in effect. Timetables of some sort that would be that would, when feasible, would would be part of what's being brought forward by staff. And so I guess what I'm asking is just a more general question, since we talk about a multi-year plan. Is the implication that on all of these points, and in particular, the the racial equity component of it, that. Does the multi-year plan mean that we're likely to see some sort of schedules and timetables for achieving some of the goals? We're not putting them into this resolution, but that is that sort of a valid understanding of what is meant when we say a multi-year plan?
This is this is Suzanne Ludlow, I think. I mean, obviously, what your intention needs to be clear here, from a race equity perspective, that's involved in every single step, and it wouldn't be that that'd be some out year that we get to that. So I don't want that to be the to the, that is not how we function, and I that's not the. You know, that is not what the councils or the staff's view is of how to deal with race equity. So I just, I didn't want that to. Your comments made me think that you were wondering about that, and I want to make that clear.
No, I I understand that that pervades or should pervade everything we do.
Right.
But I I just wonder how we envision what the concept of a multi-year plan looks like.
Yeah, well, I mean, I think we'll have to come, you know, we'll be coming back to you with these plans, the, you know, we're as it, there's a lot that's that's here, and we're going to have to do a lot of prioritizing with council about how, you know, about how that gets done, vis a vis the other projects.
OK, thank you, appreciate it.
Great. Anything else? On this? All right, then, I think for the time being, we are seeing no other changes to the resolution, we will post this and vote on it next week. OK, so I will save this. And then now we're going to move on to the ordinance, so stop sharing that and then. Share. All right. And this one, I'm going to need a little help because I think things were added to this document that I had not had a chance to look at, so. Are folks seeing, what are folks seeing now? Are you seeing?
No, just seeing the top of your.
A blue line.
Screen.
Where is it? You seeing it now?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Oh, actually, wait. Replacement, no, we're not doing this yet. Sorry. Before we get into the specific language changes on the ordinance, let's first do replacement because that's a bit more complicated. On that and. Councilwoman Caustic, is it a good time to share what you shared with me or?
Sure, yeah, I actually sent you an updated one just before the meeting.
Yeah, I think I got that one, let me pull it up and see. Hold on one sec, sorry.
If we're talking about replacement requirements, we also have the tables in the slides from last week, if they help.
Yeah, I just created a sort of simplified, what I hope is a simplified summary of that. Hopefully you'll be able to find it.
I found it, and you can let me know if this when I share it, if it's the correct one.
Yeah, can you just go to the second page? They both say the same thing, but the second one, I think, is a little easier to follow.
Oops. This like this is the second one, right?
Yeah.
I can't, all right, wait a second. OK.
So I can just walk through, if it's useful, walk through what this is. Um, so as part of the tree ordinance, as we all know, there are the replanting requirements, which are different at different rating levels. So the far left side of this table shows the levels the trees are rated at. I think actually through later discussion with Ms. Braithwaite, I think it should actually be five through nine, not four through nine. And we can talk about that maybe in a minute. But those those numbers on the left side show the ratings of trees. And so four through nine or five through nine would be the lowest rated trees in the worst health. Ten through sixteen, middle range of seventeen through twenty, the highest, most healthy trees. And so I just took the spreadsheet that Ms. Braithwaite circulated previously and included some of the numbers in a little more simplified way here. It doesn't include every possible permutation of what this might look like. So I I know, I think Councilmember Kovar was looking into another alternative, and and there are probably some other options as well that are not necessarily incorporated here. But basically, this was just an attempt at showing what the current rates are, which is a one one percent replacement for the lowest rated trees, two percent for the middle and three percent for the highest. That yields a replanting requirement of three hundred and eighty-two total trees. We talked about last week the fact that not all of those permits are followed through on, and so that not all of those trees were actually removed, and there were not replanting replantings for all three hundred and eighty-two of those trees in the past year. But those were required tree replantings based on the structure that we have now. And then you just see one, two, three, four, five, several different options here for alternative. Replanting structures and requirements, some would require no replantings for that lowest level, that's the zero. Some would require a one-for-one replanting, which we talked about briefly, I think, last time, where there would not be a percentage calculated based on the size of the tree, but it would just be, if you take down a tree at this level, you're you replace it with one tree. And then some use a one percent replacement requirement for the middle category, some use a two percent. Most in this chart use a three percent for the highest and one uses a four percent. So certainly, I we can refer to the chart as well that Ms. Braithwaite created with more detail, but I just thought it might be useful to see some of the differences here. And I think you can see that. In kind of the the lowest requirements. Tape of the lowest requirement. tape of the lowest requirement column, as you might expect, uh, it would reduce the number of total trees required to be replanted down to one twenty-nine, about a third of what we currently have. And then you see some differences along um along the continuum here. Um, and then again, I want to note, I listed the two percent and the three percent, the four percent. But actually, um, not included here are the half uh replanting requirements for undesirable trees. I just didn't include that because it gets a little complicated if you start to get into that. But a tree that's not desirable, uh, that's removed at one of those level levels actually has a half um of the uh number listed here requirement. So for the lowest range, it's a half half percentage. For the middle, it's one percent. And for the top, it's uh one point five percent in the current structure. And then we've also talked a little bit about fee amounts. Um, and Ms. Braithwaite had recommended in increasing the fee amounts based on uh the actual cost of um tree replantings to the city and maintenance to the city, as well as incentivizing people to actually plant on property when that's possible. So we might want to talk about fee amounts just in a cursory way uh because we do not actually have fee amounts in the ordinance. That's something that will be um done through administrative regulations. But I think um it is relevant because it obviously would impact the the actual cost to homeowners and property owners as they are um going through and replacing trees based on these requirements, if they do not plant them themselves. So that's kind of just an overview of um of what you're seeing here.
Great. And Councilwoman Kostic, before I turn it over to our colleagues, um, do you have a favorite plan?
So, yeah, I have personally gone back and forth on this repeatedly since we got this data. And my personal view is, all other things equal, I would prefer to not have a replanting at the lowest level. I I do um think that would be ideal. Um, however, seeing the um the really significant impact that has on the number of replacements in this chart, that gave me a lot of pause. And so for me, the one I was kind of leaning towards was the number option number four, which would be a one-for-one replacement at the lower level. Um, and then a two percent replacement at the middle, which is in line with what we do right now, and a three percent at the upper level. Um, I was also thinking through the fee amounts a little bit, and I would love to hear from Ms. Braithwaite a little bit on that um during our discussion as well. One of the rec the recommendation had been, um, the current level of fees are one seventy-five per tree. Uh, if someone pays a fee, uh, fee, uh, how do you say that? Fee in lieu? If someone pays a fee in lieu, um, they would pay one seventy-five per tree. And um I think the bulk buy amount is actually a little more than that, um, if you actually purchase it yourself. Um, and then uh what we had discussed was maybe increasing that to to three hundred dollars per tree replacement, which I think would potentially have a greater impact on those higher levels where someone might be taking out a tree and there are, you know, ten replacements. So one thing I was interested in exploring was whether we might have a lower or a higher fee per tree for maybe the first one or two replantings, and then reduce that level to a one seventy-five or two hundred for the remainder of those plantings, so that we would be incentivizing people who likely have some space on their property to do something cheaper and just replant themselves. But once you get past, you know, one or two trees, most people are not able to actually replant on their property. Um, so I think it's complicated, and I don't think there are great, easy answers. But my um my overall feeling is that I think something like option number four here, where you have a one-to-one, one-for-one, and then you have a similar percentage to what we have right now at the higher levels, would get us closer to our overall target and still provide the advantage of making it easier for people to remove those trees that are really just not in good health and are not doing well and need to be removed soon.
Thank you. Um, so you have Councilwoman Dibala Kovar and then Smith.
Uh, yeah, thank you, Casey, uh, Councilmember Kostic for uh for putting for taking the extra step. The first questions that I have, which might be for Ms. Braithwaite rather than uh Councilmember Kostic, is I'm looking at the slides from last week and they the the what 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 is labeled on this slide current is what we have in the existing question, how what we have in the existing um ordinance adjusted for the fact that the tree ratings have changed. And that what we have is option number one is what was originally proposed and what's what's in the what's in the draft ordinance right now. Um, I think. And then where I get lost is none of these appears to be the tree commission proposal, not that I'm endorsing it, but just for comparison, they, I believe, had had three and five percent in in their um second and third categories, ten to sixteen and seventeen to twenty. So I guess that's three questions. First one, the current um doesn't is not the same as what's in the the current or existing is not the same as what's in the um slides from last week. And then, so I guess that's the first question. The number three hundred and eighty-two is the same, but the percentages are different.
I I can speak to this chart, and I'm I'm sorry if I did not include something. So I I would love to hear Ms. Braithwaite double check that this is accurate. Um, because I did just put this together a couple of minutes before the the meeting. Um, but you are absolutely correct that it does not include the tree commission recommendation, and I I did overlook that one.
Yeah, I just wanted to put that by contrast to to another recommendation.
Sure. My understanding of the current column, it is the current ordinance. Those are the current percentages. It just doesn't include the undesirable percentage. That's the half. Um, and that number three eighty-two was based on that April to April analysis I did with those current replanting requirements.
Okay. So we'll want to, we will want to um fix the slides then if we want to use them again from last from a couple of weeks ago.
I have to look to see what was different because I I don't read.
Doesn't matter right now, but so my reaction is I think that one-for-one makes sense. I think that encouraging those who are removing a dead tree, actively encouraging them in all the ways that we were discussing earlier about encouraging folks to plant trees on their property, um actively encouraging anyone who has no would have no replacement requirement, be zero, not one tree, but zero trees, to to plant that one tree through bulk buy, through a whole bunch of other techniques, active would be a good, a good thing to include. And I am somewhat reluctant to load up on the increased percentages um for for the higher um the higher categories, because we lowered them for a reason. There were there were people who were very concerned about being required to um to do what they are to do what they um are required to do now in some of those upper categories. So I would be more cautious about changing that. And I would like to double check that ten to sixteen the current existing requirement um before saying that I would go with the two percent. Thank you.
Great. Um, Councilmember Kovar.
Yes, uh, thank you, and thank you, uh, Councilmember Kostic for putting this together. So um why we're where we are here and trying to understand all these options is um because initially, we in response to the community and in discussions with the council, um, felt that it made sense to say for the less healthy trees, uh, eliminating the replacement requirement could make sense. We didn't know when we initially proposed that what level of replacement we were talking about potentially knocking out. And the answer is three hundred and eighty-two trees just from last year. And so that seems like a gap that's bigger than than we want to stand out there. Now, I don't think we have to fill every single uh tree within that gap because based on other aspects of the ordinance and what we're doing with the resolution, I think we're going to be doing some additional types of planting and incentivizing more planting than we did before. But we don't want to have that three hundred and eighty-two standing out there. So the one question I have for for Ms. Braithwaite, because um I had several email exchanges with her, and I was under the impression, and maybe, you know, you could just answer this, that in what would be um category four, I thought that when we went with the one-for-one um for the categories four through nine, and then two and three percent. I I thought the numbers were a little bit lower than that because when you and I had spoken, we got up to that range um by having part of four through ninety, one-for-one and part of it with a higher percentage. And I don't know if you can elaborate on that during this meeting now, but I just want to make sure we're I'm either understanding what you and I talked about when we emailed previously, or if this information is.
Yeah, well, this is the first I'm seeing this chart, so I'd have to go back to the numbers that I had originally provided, as well as some of the edit versions, and see if they add it up.
Because the
I can go offline and do that now if you want.
Well, the data that that I got from Ms. Braithwaite earlier, just just by comparison, was that if we took trees rated four and five and had them have a one-for-one replacement, and then for six through nine, went back to the percentages that exist in the current law, which is one percent or a point five percent for the undesirable. All told, together, that added up to around two hundred trees or so. And then if in addition, we went back with a higher percentage of the ten to sixteen, we would get somewhere around two sixty, two sixty-five. So I I think there's maybe more than one way to get there, whether it's this version of four or some other version of four. I would like to see that because that would get us pretty close. And then I would just, and we can, we can crunch those numbers just to make sure, I would just suggest two other things. Um, one of them is in the, and this is connected to this, even though it's not in this precise part of the of the ordinance. Um, we have uh several categories in the ordinance that are exempt from uh replanting requirements, and some like hazardous uh or complete dead tree are already exempt from a replanting requirement in in our current um ordinance. And then we also talk about trees that are um causing damage to homes or other physical structures, and then those that are in imminent decline. And I think with imminent decline, that could be a fairly wide-open uh designation, which could contribute to some of this gap. And so I would propose that we find a way to tighten up that language around imminent decline. And and as I think through it, and based on some of the conversations I've had today, imminent means it's something that's about to happen. I think it's hard for, maybe hard for an arborist to say. It's one thing to say that will be an imminent hazard if we don't take it down. It's another thing to say that tree is soon going to start declining. It's hard to know. It's hard to quantify that. So I was thinking if we took something like uh trees that are in severe decline or something along those lines, that would be a narrower, a narrower type of exemption, which wouldn't probably contribute as much to the gap. And then in addition, we could do one other thing, and I mentioned this to Ms. Braithwaite. I don't want to characterize her response, but I think she said we could do it. At the end of the ordinance, we have our reporting requirements, the annual reports that the staff give give to the council. And there's one additional report we could ask for, which would be at the end of each year. And it would be at the end of the first year, um, they would calculate, give us a number of all the replacement trees, in effect, that three hundred and eighty-two number or whatever would be, but then give us a comparison to the old system. And then we would get a snapshot. We could see, are we actually um potentially embarking on a system of replacement trees is really going to give us a serious gap over time with the canopy? Or by contrast, are we not that far off from what we did, what we've had in the old law? So I would suggest, in addition to going with some version like number four, based on whatever Ms. Braithwaite's numbers show, having two other things, uh, something tighter than imminent decline, maybe severe decline, and adding that as one of the calculations that they just do, that they just do a quick comparison. Whenever we adopt, what's the difference at the end of the year with how this would have looked before? And then if we see we're really verging in the wrong direction, we could tighten it up further. So I know that was a long answer, but I think that's the the approach that would make sense to take.
All right, um, Councilmember Smith and then Kostic.
Uh, Councilmember Kostic, I want to thank you for the presentation on this. If we go with option four with the total of two hundred and fifty-seven trees planted, have you figured out if there's any cost savings from uh on the labor side? Because currently, we're at three hundred and eighty-two. And granted, that's the most trees that will be planted with this proposal. But that is substantially fewer trees than what we're currently planting. Is there any type of cost savings that have been calculated with this uh new proposal?
Because these replants are the requirement of the applicant, it isn't a city cost. Um, so these are costs that the resident would bear based on the requirement to replant, unless something was changed in the way we currently uh require replantings. So this is a cost that would be borne by the applicant related to replants. And as Casey has mentioned, and we had mentioned previously, we're recommending an increase in the fee in lieu uh from what it currently is. So there would actually be cost increases to the applicants as a result of uh the proposed changes. There may be some cases, for instance, if we don't require replants uh for those rated four to nine, where the applicant will not have to pay a replanting fee, and in that way, their costs will be reduced. But in most other cases, the cost is going to be increased as a result of the increase in matching current market rates for the tree planting fees.
So e- even though this this is for residents having to do, you know, plant these trees themselves, there is an application process that they have to, there has, there's a process that they have to submit paperwork or or something to the city. So has your staff calculated what is the per application cost for that process?
Not for a while. When we last uh changed the trees, uh, the city's tree uh permit application fees, there was an analysis done about the average time spent for uh the various types of applications. So at that point, those costs were pretty reflective of the hours uh required, both from the arborist as well as the administrative staff to process permits. So I think I I think we feel pretty comfortable with our permit fees, um, though that is a topic to discuss if we're eliminating the waiver option, which is currently at a lesser cost. So that's that's a topic that will the council will want to review. But currently, our fees are reflective of the time, the average time spent um doing the site visits, doing the communication and doing the paperwork.
I just want to make sure, Ms. Braithwaite, that there isn't any slippage. And, you know, we make all these changes, then all of a sudden, your department has to, you know, face the burden of these costs. And this isn't something that we've articulated to residents. And we'd have to come back and, you know, increase these fees or whatever. But but I appreciate uh you thinking about it. Thank you.
If I might follow up on that, I let's see, get my video. I might follow up. I mean, one of the major reasons, in my view, that the tree ordinance was being looked at were the complaints of the cost of replanting. And so I mean, that is part of the reason that the number of trees I thought was being reduced is part of this, especially for those trees that um are in in decline. And so when we talk about the impact on residents, that's something that we're looking at. And if you compare it also to the issue under the the resolution that's just been discussed, you know, I think one of the areas of concern is that if there is a move, that may be the right move, to really consider the maintenance of of the tree canopy into Comal Park is a as a community thing, it may also be a push then to have more money being spent by the city to either offset these kinds of costs or to do it in a different way. So I just want to keep that as part of the discussion, that this does have these cost implications to residents.
Thank you.
Councilmember Kostick. I think you're on mute, Councilmember Kostick.
Thank you. Yeah, I was just saying, to me, the fees and the interaction between the fees and the chart is one of the hardest parts, I think, in order for me to get my head around. And it hasn't been a big part of our discussions to date. And obviously, we need to adopt the ordinance before we identify what exactly those fees will be. But I do think it's something we need to really keep in mind as we're going through and doing this, because I do think if we have a higher replanting requirement, then we may not want to increase those fees to the higher levels, and certainly not for some of the, you know, potentially for 11 trees or some large number of trees, where you would expect someone to have to read to the fee in lieu rather than planting on their property. So that's, I think that would be helpful, Ms. Braithwaite, if you, it doesn't have to be tonight, but if there's some information you can provide us in terms of what you're thinking on that.
Can I also just say that the way the current situation is now, we inadvertently incentivize people to pay a fee in lieu rather than plant a tree on their property, which is the exact opposite of what we want them to do. The fee in lieu price, because it hasn't been raised, is below the market rate, even for our bulk buy program, which is like $207 a tree now for an inch and a half caliper warranted tree of nursery stock quality versus 175 for a fee in lieu. So if nothing else, we need to make sure we're not giving a reverse incentive for people to pay a fee. It's far more beneficial to everyone, the community as well as the city, for people to plant that tree on their property, rather than give the city money to plant a tree somewhere. To get a tree in a property and be cared for by that property owner is far more, a greater value than to put up, to put money into the city's tree fund. So whatever we, wherever we come out from this, I think staff feel pretty strongly that we need to correct that disincentive for planting on property. And the thought was, if the fee in lieu were actually more costly than the bulk buy tree planting program, that would create the incentive for people to plant a tree on their property through the bulk buy program versus paying a fee in lieu that reflects not only the cost of the tree, but the cost the city has to pay to maintain that tree, at least initially for watering and whatnot in its first year. So that's what we were trying to, we were trying to right that balance that's currently now lopsided the wrong way.
Thanks. Yeah, I think that makes a lot of sense. It's just for those larger number of replacements, where it's unlikely that someone would actually be able to pay or would actually be able to replant themselves. That's where I feel like it would be useful, maybe, to look into whether we could do the higher fee for the lower number of replant, like for the first tree, or first one or two trees, and then above that, maybe do a slightly reduced. It doesn't have to be 175, maybe 207 or whatever it might be.
We have had applicants who can't plant all the trees on their property, but reach out to their neighbors and plant them on their neighbor's property. So there are ways to get at planting the trees on property around you, not just on your own property, that would still provide that tree in the ground and meet the replanting requirements.
Yeah, I mean, I think that that would obviously be ideal. I'm just trying to imagine someone actually being able to find spots for like 10 to 15 trees. It just seems like a lot.
Yeah, it can be. Really, you know, again, it could be somewhat neighborhood dependent. We have folks with really active listservs who are able to find six locations, you know, with an email. So.
Yeah, and maybe, maybe a part of this would be helpful to have some sort of community collaboration in terms of identifying a way for people to find others who want to plant a tree on their property. And there could be some help in making those connections.
Yeah, I've seen the community garden thing, where I've got a backyard that I can't plant in. If you want to plant in, you can. So maybe we do the same kind of thing, where people could sign up for a tree. And then if we have an applicant who is looking for spots, they can contact them to see if they would, you know, take one of the trees.
Just very, very quickly, and I don't necessarily need an answer right now, but I'm not totally understanding Councilmember Kovar's discussion about the trees in imminent decline. So maybe that's just something we can follow up on later. And it sounds like your request, Councilmember Kovar, was for some additional information from Ms. Braithwaite on that. Maybe I'll understand it better when I get that.
Two things about that. One is, I just want to make sure the numbers are right, because based on, I think we can get to around 260 or so in category four, one way or the other. I just want to make sure, either I may be misunderstanding what I got from her yesterday, or there may be some slight re-crunching of the numbers that's needed. That's okay. The second piece of it would just be a change in the language in the ordinance, in the section where it talks about the four categories that would be exempt from replanting requirements, and it would just be to tighten up one of those, so that it didn't represent a big new group of trees that were totally exempt from replanting. And when we get to that section of the ordinance, I can just point that out.
Councilwoman Sershi.
Real quick, can someone remind me of where, I guess, how our, historically, the distribution of our replanting requirements? Like, are most of the folks who have replanting requirements falling into like the four to nine or the 10 to 16 or the 17 to 20 category?
I had done an analysis of that and kind of a summary. I don't remember offhand what those, what it looked like. I can, I can pull that back up and provide that information.
Yeah, and I could check my email too. I'm sorry, I just couldn't remember if we put that together. But that might also be, you know, something that would be helpful to keep in mind, because if we've seen over time that most folks fell within, you know, that four to nine category we're talking about on one-to-one, and then we're thinking about the fee structure, you know, that might also, to create the incentives, if we know most people would likely fall within a particular category, building the structure around, trying to incentivize to the masses, right? Create the incentives, so where the people who are more likely to have to do the replanting would fall, to encourage them to plant on their properties, I think will be important. So that's the one question that I have. Overall, I think option four makes sense to me. I'm a little, while I understand the desire to increase the percentage for the larger, the categories with the larger tree requirement, tree replanting requirements, I just grow increasingly concerned that we're going to find ourselves in the same situation we're in right now, where someone has to take out, you know, a very large tree, and they have this crazy high replanting, and there's no way they could put it on their property, and there's no way they could really find anyone. So basically, they're just paying more money into the system for the city to plant trees, and we don't have space to plant them either. So I would prefer for us to maybe consider keeping those higher tier categories the same, do some of the things that we've talked about in terms of kind of making those connections with residents who want to spread the love in terms of replanting, and create more disincentives for people to actually pay in lieu of planting. And I think that might actually put us in a situation where we're kind of achieving the goal of having more trees planted on private property. So yeah, I'm okay with four.
Well, I just want to say a huge thank you to Councilwoman Kostick for this chart. There is no way we would have gotten through this conversation without it.
Just to interrupt for a minute, a huge thank you to Ms. Braithwaite for the chart. All I did was literally just take it and put it on this piece of paper.
Thank you for the group effort here. So what I'm hearing, and we can then turn to the other items in the ordinance, is that for our first reading, it sounds like there's generally coalescing around version four, but it sounds like we need to check some numbers with what Councilmember Kovar had, and look at that, and also just revisit this with the changes in the fee structure as well next week before we vote. So maybe if we could assume for now, we're going with version four for the tree replant, replacement, and we'll just revisit and reconfirm next week when we have our first vote. Is that good? I'm seeing heads not. Okay.
I have one comment, which is that specifically the 10 to 16 rated trees for the current, the 2%, that would be the specific area that I would appreciate, Ms. Braithwaite, double checking.
Sure.
Yeah, and I think Councilmember Kovar was splitting up the four to nine and whether or not, what that looks like, so.
Yeah, and just to Councilmember Sershi's question, by far, the highest percentage of trees is in the four to nine category. Two, over two-thirds. A very few, very small percentages in the top category, the 17 to 20. So the bulk of them, almost one-third, two-thirds, between the lowest and the middle, and then very few at the top.
All right, so now we're going-
Really briefly, if I can, I think, just to clarify, I believe that it would need to be, if we did go with what we're discussing now, would be the trees rated five through nine, not four through nine. Is that correct, Ms. Braithwaite?
Yeah, and we need to have a conversation when we are looking at those criteria, if we still want to have dead and hazardous trees, as well as those in whatever the adjective, some kind of decline, serious, imminent, pending. If we want to have those as no replant, then we would, we would move four off that chart, and we would start from five, because the current practice has been to not give any category a lower rating than one, so we don't use zeros.
So that, I just want to clarify and make sure, because we need to wrap this up. And so is there a decision that needs to be made now on what you just said?
I guess not.
No?
I think the chart that is there and those numbers that are there, if I am understanding correctly, are not considering any of the trees that are dead. So that proposal does not include the like 400 trees that are removed, that are currently dead. So I think what we've been discussing has been the idea that anything that's dead would not have a replanting requirement, as we do now.
Okay. Cool, I just wanted to make sure, because we're, verse reading is next week. So, all right, so version four, some iteration of that. Let's move on now to specific changes to the ordinance. And I'm just, we've pulled, just because it's, it was getting confusing in the actual ordinance, we just wanted to highlight those places where we've had some changes. The first was the city manager authority. This is section 12.04.080. Is there any comments or other things on this?
I could comment on the first, on A. Councilmember DeBaal might want to comment on E. But the purpose of A is to bring some similarity, although it's not identical, some similarity to the process that would be followed, including some public notice for trees that are proposed to be removed from city property. And previously, the process could be fairly catch-as-catch-can. More recently, when Jan Benzuppen was the urban forest manager, he did commit to a policy of providing some advance notice on a more regular basis when a tree was being removed from city property. But this is just an effort to regularize that a little bit more and have some public notice. It doesn't permit appealing of those decisions, but it does have some public notice. And it was some work we did with the city manager and with Public Works to ensure that they could live with the languages there. And I believe the answer is yes. In A.
All right. Any questions on A? Seeing none, we'll move to E. I don't understand what's in brackets. I have a question. I didn't notice that before.
So I can speak to that. So it's simply a markup of a markup of a markup. So just, it's, it would read with the things in brackets taken out and the things underlined added to.
Got it.
So it should be more like A, which didn't have any markings, because it's new. But in any event, basically, it was to say that the city manager shall manage city-owned forested areas. And basically, it identifies that most of our open areas are, do have some kind of management plan already that the city works with, if it's city-owned, and that those should be the things that guide how the forested areas is managed.
Great. Okay.
This is Cindy. I'm not sure why the goals of the ordinance came out. I'm not sure it's a huge deal, but I would like to see that stay in. But the point being, what we have there now is woefully out of date and doesn't actually do what I think we want it to do, which is there are some city-owned areas that have more than one tree on them. How big is an urban forest? And should be managed as, as direct, as directed by the, if they've been designated by plan or by the open space plan, by the resolution, by the covenant, by the whatever, to be managed consistent with the, with the goals of this ordinance, but only those, not every single pocket playground in the city.
Okay. Any questions or comments on this? All right, seeing none, this will be in the first reading of the ordinance next week. The next section was on the legislative findings. Councilwoman Kostick and I just had a couple of changes here. Mostly, these are to make them, the changes consistent with the resolution that we worked on tonight. I don't know if anyone has any comments on this one. They're pretty straightforward. Okay, seeing none, we'll move to the section now on reports to council. So we have some additions here, in addition to a description of the condition of the urban forest, including a record of location and species of tree planted by the city or by regulation established by the city. Again, that is consistent with the conversation we had regarding the resolution. The amount of funds the city has received from fines or forfeited security bonds will be, the planning process that we talked about earlier in the resolution, also adding the number and percentage of native trees and climate-adapted trees relative to the total number of trees purchased with city funds. This one's my question. See, prepare, and every five to six years, update a master tree plan focused on protecting and maintaining the urban tree canopy, which shall consist of tree canopy assessment, future planting plans, including planting to replace trees removed by permit and with no individual replacement requirements, and utilize the most recent LIDAR data. One question I have is five or six years realistic? And the other thing I'm realizing as reading this, that we should make this consistent with what we just talked about in the resolution, because it seems not consistent with that. So I don't know if the director of Public Works or the city manager has thoughts on this on. It's been a long time. I didn't know five or six years seemed- It's been a long time. I didn't know five or six years seemed like.
We just need to caveat it by, we use, we will, we will have LiDAR data when the county runs it. And they're, they've told us that they're going to do it on a three-year schedule. And there's usually at least a year delay from when that gets taken to when it's available for our consultant to, you know, use. So providing the county continues to do the LiDAR flyover at the schedule that they've previously told us, then, you know, that's fine. If for some reason, if there's a delay, or they're not doing it for a while, or we have to go to Park and Planning instead of the county, you know, we may have some issues. We have had, it's been very, relatively inexpensive for us to get the data because it's been done by the county's flyover. We're too small to get a flyover just for ourselves, so we really have to incorporate it in, in a larger jurisdictions data gathering.
Okay. All right. So not so that we aren't, now, but I feel like the C is something that we need to, in the next day or so, just revisit to make sure it's consistent also with the changes we made in the resolution. So I'm just gonna flag it for now, because I feel like we made some changes about adding like LiDAR data or similar or other things. And I just want to revisit that. Okay. Next is maintain and publicize a species list for selection of trees to be planted on private and public property. Pursuant to the requirements of this ordinance, with a focus on native species and climate adapted species, such a list shall be periodically reviewed and modified with input from urban forest experts from the state and county government, area universities, and other organizations and the community. Okay.
Just, just to point out one thing, the, the, the addition of and the community is not and everyone in the community. It's and urban forest experts in the community, of which there are quite a few. So the, the intent still is to keep a technical focus on the review of the speech, species list. I just wanted to point that out. But, but clearly, there are residents who qualify and who have been and continue to be very helpful in this area.
All right, moving down to definitions, we wanted to specify what we meant by urban and what they were injured and destructive towards. So we added the health of people and plants. This next one, we can just double check. There was one line that says notify the department. And the question was, should it be urban forest manager? And there's another typo. And then under definition, you, oh, this is a separate area, use of the tree canopy fund. The tree canopy fund may be used to plant trees on public and private property with a focus on planting native species and where appropriate climate adapted species, except when no native or climate adapted species is well suited and available, and to maintain trees planted with funds from the tree canopy fund or other purposes that promote the urban forest.
I just want to comment that we are kind of creating a new name of a fund. We've called it the Tree Fund before, so I just don't want to have a confusion that this is some new fund. But it's, it's the fund that comes from the fee and lieu and the fines that the city charges.
I didn't propose this, but I would be fine to call it the Tree Fund, not the Tree Canopy Fund. That reason.
That was not meant to be a separate fund. So whatever we call it in the rest of the ordinance, it should be called here, too.
I don't think it hasn't, I don't think it's called out in the ordinance. I think it's just a finance category where they, you know, we have a revenue line that tracks and accepts those payments.
I think there was some discussion when we were going through this about making sure that it was not just for strict replanting, but since we were also adding the category of promoting urban forests, that that might have been why we added canopy, but I don't, I don't think it really needs to be there.
That's right. I remember that conversation.
All right.
So this one is.
I have no idea what this is. You're at tag.
I'm gonna tell you. So all that matters is the yellow, first of all, not the rest of it. And it was just presented this way. But this is the thing that I've been talking about for a while and which is what would happen when, in the future, if there are proposals or applications for substantial number of tree removals. And just as a reminder, this came up in the context of Montgomery College, where they proposed to remove 77 trees, and it's been reduced now to 59. And so what this calls for is that it's within the general section on how the tree removal permit standards and process works. What we're saying is a few different things. So if you go down a little ways, what has to happen is, first of all, before an applicant submits a an application for removal of more than 10 trees, and that's the number that we set as the threshold above, that's a major, you know, multiple removal. The applicant has to conduct a community meeting first for the purpose of presenting information about the proposed tree removal. And then at least 15 days prior to that, they have to send notice out notifying the people in the community, as well as the city manager and the city council member, the mayor and so on, that this public notice is happening. And then there's some requirements about the format and the size of the notice and posting on site and considering doing it in other languages. And the city will also post it. And then once they're done, they have to post a a report on what it contained and what the issues were that were raised. That gets posted on the website. And once all those things are done, then it becomes like any other application. And it would still have to go through the application process. It could be challenged through the tree commission, et cetera. But the key is, there's a lot more communication. And the reason that I proposed this, and the reason we felt that it made sense to try to do something like this, and so far, I will say, none of my colleagues have had a chance to look at this yet. So it's just something I, I, I did working with Ms. Braithwaite and the city attorney. But the reason we thought something like this, or I thought something like this was necessary, was because in the case of Montgomery College, even though it was this vast number of trees, they talked to the city, the urban forest manager, looked over the permit and kind of gave them a preliminary approval. And then there was 15 days for people to challenge it. 16 or so people put in a challenge on the last day of the 15 days, just so that they could get into the tree commission. But there had never really been the kind of communication that there should be for a major tree removal proposal. So what this is really aimed at is spurring some communication with the community and the neighborhood prior to the submission of the application, which will do two things. It will tell the, let the people in the neighborhood know what's going on. They can raise questions, they can make suggestions, and it might actually lead to the applicant getting better information for their permit, because some of the neighbors might point out things that they hadn't understood before. So it's just a way of not treating the initial period of the application the same way it's treated when somebody is proposing to cut down one tree to build a deck on the back of their house. It wouldn't apply specifically, though, to this Montgomery College case, because that permit's already been submitted. So this would apply to future cases. Maybe, we hope there won't be many, but if there are, this is the idea.
I just had a question. Is 10 the right, like, where did 10 come from?
That was kind of snatched out of the ether. You can pick your number.
Well, no, I just, I, I guess, and again, I haven't, this is the first time I'm looking at this. Are we, is there a size of the tree? Does it have to meet? Sorry.
Mayor? I mean, I think all those are really important questions. I just saw this this evening for the first time as well. I, I think in one place, it says more than 10 trees, another place, it says 10 or more. I think 10 is too small of a number, frankly. But, but there's also, you know, maybe it's definitions or something about what counts as a tree and what counts as, you know. And I, and I combined this with the section where it kind of added into the city manager's rules to follow these other provisions that, you know, if I'm doing a management of an open space area and we've got some, you know, a number of undesirable trees, we would need to go through, I would assume, a community meeting process first before then going through the individual tree items. I, I would like to spend some more time thinking about this. And, you know, and I just, and I, my first gut feeling was that 10 trees is a pretty low number.
And if I can just say, that was really almost a placeholder, because understanding that people hadn't had a chance to look at it yet, but wanting to get this into the mix, since I'd mentioned it a few times before, into the mix when we're discussing the ordinance this time. This was something that Ms. Braithwaite and Mr. Cornberg said could at least achieve what I was hoping for. I'm fine adjusting the number, making it higher, or identifying it in some way as not counting undesirable species or any version of that. The, the key to me is just having this additional structure for communication prior to the initiation of the permit.
Yeah, that, I mean, I guess, I, just looking at it, I might have the same reaction as the city manager. 10 seems, I don't know, a little low without knowing.
I have a question on that, which is that can we ask Ms. Braithwaite this coming week to go back and look at some of the data that she pulled for the permits over the past year and, and see, just a quick look to me, just this minute of the permits that have come in for things like decks and porches and stuff, that 10 seems a little high also. And I wonder whether, I'd also like to see if she has a thought about whether what really matters is a tree, is a number of trees over certain size, as opposed to a bunch of smaller trees that are mulberries, for example.
Right.
Maybe, so I, this is great to have this on the table, and those would be my two specific questions to Ms. Braithwaite to think about over the next few years.
It's pretty rare that we have applications with multiples of trees. We've never had one like college before. And in those cases where we do have six to 12 trees in an application, it tends to be the same property owners. It used to be the college, used to be the hospital. So there's not many other property owners that have a large enough lot that, you know, would generate that type of tree maintenance. So some of the large apartment buildings and those two institutions would likely be ones that would kick in to have that. But I could look back through the last few years and see how often we've had applications of us, of 10 or, 10 or more trees. Just by coincidence, the, our online tree permit process allows a person to include five trees in the, in the application. So if they had more, they would have to do an additional application for those trees.
Great. All right. Well, that was the last thing on here. So in terms of outstanding issues, I have three areas. One is the replacement, what we talked about before, looking at some version of number four. The section in the report section 12.12.140, section C. We just need to look at that paragraph and make sure it's consistent to the changes we made in the resolution this evening. And then this final section, the main questions we've raised tonight is, is 10 the right number of trees? Should we specify size or whether or not it's undesirable? And basically defining what we're counting as a tree here in the 10, or should we up that number?
One other, there's one other thing, which relates to the severe decline question, which is connected to the.
Is that in here?
It wasn't in here, because it was a, a late, a late thing. And I can either send it around separately, or we can go to that section of the ordinance now, just so people can see what we're talking about. Whichever you prefer.
Do you have the ordinance up?
It's section 12.12.080.
Stop sharing this.
I think it was in what you just had up there, Mayor.
Oh, is it? I'm sorry.
Right.
This one, too? Okay, hold on, let me.
The very end, if I'm not mistaken.
So if you look at, let me see here, two, go back down, C2.
Correct.
So C2, it says, where an owner proposes removing an urban forest tree that the city manager has determined to be dead or in imminent decline because of significant defect or infestation that cannot be ameliorated reasonably. And so that's, to me, imminent decline is it, as I've thought about it more in conversations I've had with folks, is a pretty gaping, you know, pretty open, wide open category. And so I was suggesting some version of, you know, severe decline or something else like that, because again, it has to be connected to something that has a significant defect or infestation. That's not just going to be anything, but imminent decline would be really hard to get to. Severe decline, meaning it's declining now severely, as opposed to it might decline later, which is what, or is expected to decline later, which is what imminent means. Doesn't have to be the word severe, but that, I think, adjusting this also fits in with closing the gap, because it reduces to some degree, the, the number of trees that would otherwise require no replacement at all, which is what these.
Can, Ms. Braithwaite, can I ask, is there a, from a urban forest manager's perspective? I mean, imminent sounds actually more severe to me than severe decline. Imminent sounds like this thing's coming down, and it's coming down like, you're looking at.
In conversations with Councilmember Kovar earlier, I said, we use the word imminent related to a hazard. Is this an imminent hazard, or is this, you know, is this something that is cracking, falling, needs to come out right away? In terms of decline, the word itself to me means on the way down. So you can't have an, in my mind, imminent and decline don't really kind of go together. My understanding of what the council was trying to get at here is that trees that are, you know, not maybe totally dead, still have leaves, but they're in the, they're in the twilight of their life. They are, they are going to expire sooner rather than later. It was this whole issue of trying to reduce the replanting requirement impact on residents. So I was trying to get at what type, how do we want to define those type of trees? We have this wording. We've also used the four to nine as the lower rated trees. So there, you know, we could either reference the the rating in the chart, we could try to wordsmith the words. We just need to come up with what, how we're going to define for both the arborist as well as community members, what, what is it about that tree? I mean, dead is easy, hazardous, we've got defined. It's, you know, what are these other category of trees that are in decline that we're going to allow to be removed without replanting?
I mean, it sounds like we should reference the rating, because wouldn't that be the easiest for people to understand? And then they have, I mean, I think one of the other things we heard from residents as we were getting feedback on this was the tree ordinance seems so subjective in some ways, like they weren't sure. And, you know, what does imminent decline really mean? Would be an example of that. But if we link this back to the ratings.
Yeah, but the, the problem with that is, particularly if we go with Councilmember Kostic's category four, we're talking about anything that rates four through nine having some type of replacement, even if it's only one to one. So this doesn't, this doesn't work for that.
Councilman Kostic.
Yeah, I, I agree. I don't think this does work. I, I think it's, thank you for catching this. I think this was a really good catch, because I did not have this on my radar as something that was in here either. I, I do think, and I agree with the mayor, that we want to get rid of the subjective nature of things, and we want it to be more obvious what we're talking about. And I, I mean, I frequently hear from people who say, I believe my tree to be in decline, or I believe my tree to be hazardous, but it hasn't been identified that way by the arborist. And so that is often an area of confusion. So I would say, based on the rating chart, it doesn't appear to me that we are waiving the replacement requirements for trees that are in imminent decline. Based on what, what we've been discussing, unless there's some significant change to the replanting requirements that we're using. So I think we might just want to say dead here.
And then perhaps if we. And then perhaps uh, if we end up with a one for one, we want to define that in, in this as its own separate item.
Yeah.
Rated at the lower end of the chart uh, for replant, uh, for the replanting, well, we can't even call it a replanting calculation anymore.
Even if it's one for one, it wouldn't really fit in this part here because this is four categories where no replanting at all is required, which one for one is obviously not that.
Well, it does have the undesirable, where it references the half percent.
True, true.
It, it's not just no, no replanting.
You're right.
To me, this is a question, thank you for catching this. To me, this is a question of consistency with the replacement chart um, that we, that we ultimately settle on. And just make sure that the rating chart, the replacement requirement and this language sync up. Um, but I don't know that we, that this, I don't know that this is the thing that drives it.
I guess I would say, once we agree on whether it's category four or something else, then we can decide what goes here. This, this should be consistent with the rating chart, but the rating chart should be the thing that, that, or the replacement requirements connected to how they score on the ratings chart is the key. And then this should follow from that. Right now, it doesn't.
I also want to raise the following point, just to make sure that we're looking at the right set of things to make consistent. So there's also a set of criteria to be used for decisions about tree removals. And I don't know if that's the thing that needs to be consistent with this because that's what dictates which trees are, are given approval to be removed. So those are the
Maybe.
What is it, seven or nine? Um, qualitative criteria. And I would defer the consistency question to Ms. Braithwaite for the morning.
Okay.
All right. So I'm gonna add to the list then, and these are sort of sub sections of the replacement version that we need to make sure it's consistent here with whatever language we end up using on imminent decline and with this um, seven to nine qualitative criteria.
The seven to nine rating chart and the qualitative criteria, which is a different list.
Right. Okay. Thank you. Anything else? Okay, we're done for this week with the trees and where are we? Um, I'm turning it over to Councilmember Smith. You've got it. The MML Legislative Action Requests.
All right. Well, thanks, everyone. Uh, this is that time of year where jurisdictions across the state will submit LARs uh, to the league. Uh, let me just give a little um, historical context of how this started. Started in 75. Uh, at that time, uh, there was an unlimited number of LARs that could be sent in. And then uh, subsequent years, uh, that uh, number was reduced to now it's three LARs. Uh, I suspect that uh, the focus of uh, the legislative committee that reviews the LARs is going to be primarily uh, COVID-related or economic uh, recovery, recovery-related. Uh, that doesn't mean that we shouldn't uh, submit LARs that are outside of that focus. But I think that a lot of jurisdictions uh, are still going to be um, talking about COVID-19 and the pandemic, how it's infecting uh, literally their residents. Uh, and the, the uh, the board is going to, uh, the board of directors of uh, MML is going to have to consider an online virtual fall conference. And that just came out from uh, the executive director. So uh, some of you did submit some proposals. I appreciate them. Uh, police reform, I think, is going to be a, a big topic. Uh, I also think mental health will be uh, an important issue. Uh, I like with uh, Mary Mochui uh, said about Councilmember Huckers Bill that is moving through uh, Montgomery County's County Council. I uh, think that it would be great if we could find some way to uh, make that applicable to other jurisdictions, municipalities around the state. And uh, uh, Councilmember Caustic uh, put together some very good language on um, uh, employment. I think that's going to be a huge issue for a lot of um, jurisdictions in the state. So that's just an overview of uh, why we're doing the LARs, why they're so important. If anyone has any questions or any other proposals, uh, please let me know.
Great. Um, I um, sent around people. Um, I think police accountability and transparency is also something that we should um, consider putting in. Um, the Maryland ACLU, and I think they were joined by 60 other organizations. Put forward to um, state legislators um, to sign on to five um, reform areas. Um, I think three of them are applicable, applicable to um, cities. It's um, the, what we've talked about um, before and I um, just closed out of my notes here. One sec. Um, and I shared these with uh, council members before. It's um, use of force. Um, the law enforcement officers bill of rights and um, the investigations into police misconduct and changing the Public Information Act, um, the Maryland Public Information Act. Those three areas. Um, and so I was suggesting, um, I don't know if we do sort of a, just one um, ask on uh, police accountability and transparency and put those as examples. Um, but I'd like to see that for Nick, for our consideration.
And I would just add that if we're going to consider those reforms, we should consider them as a package, all three. Uh, because if we just submit one, members of the legislative committee will pick at it, so to speak. So let's try to uh, push all three. Uh, the uh, law enforcement bill of rights is gonna be a, a, a very tough one. Uh, to move forward because the, the yin and is, is so powerful and it it's really tough making any changes to the law enforcement bill of rights. But I think all three of them should be um, part of our LAR, at least one of the three.
Great.
That was submitted.
Thank you. That was a great suggestion. Um, Councilman DiBala.
Yes, thank you. So I also um, wanted to put forward something I sent folks around an email. One, two things. One is what, one thing we proposed last year that we don't need, which is um, special legislation for municipalities to be able to do property tax deferrals. Um, and, and property tax credits. There was some question about it last year. There's no need for state legislation on that. So you take that one off the table. Um, but I, I would like to um, recommend that we repropose a climate slot, a climate legislation. Uh, last year on our list to MML, one of our three was specifically community choice energy, um, which is one way to, for state legislation to enable municipal authorities and resources to take climate action at the local level. Um, this year, because of a number of reasons I'll get to in a minute, I, I'd like to package it as a generic with community choice energy as an example. Um, but I, I think it was important last year. It's even more important this year. So I'd like to propose that we have that on, on the list of things to move forward to MML as we did last year. Uh, I had, uh, I've had a number of conversations um, about specifically community choice energy with the, with the league delegate proposing it this year and last year and with uh, county officials. And they're um, frankly, the county hasn't decided yet that they are 150% behind this particular version of community choice energy. So for us to say that we want to do exactly what we put to, we want to endorse exactly what we did last year is premature. That's why the um, the more generic language. But the, the issue remains the same. What state legislation do we need so that at the municipal level, we have the authority and we have the resources to move ahead on the kinds of climate actions that we need to take in the state to meet the state goals? And so that's my proposal. Thank you.
Great. Councilmember Simmons.
Thank you. Um, I, I would like to see us uh, put all of our eggs into the police reform uh, issues for this year. Um, but I hesitate to lump them all together into a single um, request because I think the law enforcement officer bill of right changes is um, certainly gonna be worked on by other jurisdictions and, and of interest to other jurisdictions, but I also think it's gonna be a um, a lot of uh, opposition uh, from the police union. And um, um, I, I don't want to uh, see that become an anchor for our other requests. So I would, uh, I would like at least discuss uh, putting the requests, at least splitting that one out from the other uh, police accountability requests that we put in. Thank you.
Councilmember Kova.
Yeah, I mean, I think the three things that strike me are police reform, COVID-related kinds of things and uh, community choice energy. I think we sort of assume, based on what Councilmember Smith was saying, that MML is likely to do something on at least a couple of them anyway. And so if they're going to do something on, on COVID and police reform, we can certainly do those as well. But I agree with uh, Councilmember DiBala. I think um, community choice is an important one connected to our climate change work. So I don't want to let that one slide. So those are the three that I think are most uh, important for us.
And I'm just wanting to ask, clarifying, on COVID-19, is there something specific?
Um, just ensuring that we get the kind of financial assistance that we need for all the things that we're doing. It feels like there's still a lot of gaps in terms of FEMA and cares and what the, what the county's going to be doing. If, if people feel confident that we'll get everything we need, that's another story, but I just don't know if we're there yet.
Councilman Caustic and then CRC.
Um, I think the police um, uh, reform as a legislative uh, priority is really, really important. And I would say that would be my top priority. Secondarily, I had sent around some language um, supporting legislation, um, calling for support for legislation to bolster workforce development opportunities, as Councilmember Smith mentioned. Um, and then uh, listing a couple of those, such as paid on-the-job training and apprenticeship programs, employment search assistance and expedited licensure pathways for residents with degrees from outside the US, funding for certificate programs that provide career advancements, funding assistance for job training, trans, to um, transportation and distance learning equipment and programs to, to assist veterans, returning citizens and others transitioning to new employment needs. Um, I think this is going to be really, really important as we um, face the uh, economic conditions that we're facing and continue to face. And this um, type of, of support would potentially offer more opportunities for us and others throughout the, the state to be able to provide more workforce um, opportunities for people who are losing their jobs and to be able to provide the, the sorts of jobs that people can get into and have a living, good living wage and job security and the sorts of things um, that people need in order to have a stable employment situation. So I think um, I'd like to see us put forward that as well as, um, as I said, the police priority. And I would be interested in um, exploring something on uh, mental health, uh, maybe that. I don't have specific wording on that, but that's something I, I think might be useful. And um, I am interested in the climate, um, the climate proposal that Councilmember DiBala put forth as well. Um, I, I mean, one thing, one question I have um, for Councilmember Smith and just sort of in general is um, obviously, we have our own priorities and we have our own um, things that we will advocate for to um, the legislature. But what, what's sort of the best strategy in terms of what we send to MML? Do we, um, are there particular areas, as you said, um, with, with COVID, there, people are likely to be focused on that? So are we more likely, if we put forth certain types of um, proposals, to get some traction on our specific proposals that we might, um, might not get if we put forward other proposals that we really care about, but might be better um, poised to just advocate on ourselves as a community?
Uh, thank you for the question. I, I think that um, because of the enduring effect um, of um, the pandemic, that, that is going to overwhelm everything that the legislative committee is gonna be thinking about. And it probably will all be remote. Um, people are going to, you know, still be trying to figure out testing and, and um, you know, the CARES Act, part, I guess, four, that's coming up. Hopefully, we will get funding out of that. I think all that's gonna be part of the conversation with the legislative committee. Uh, I, even though I think MML is going to talk about or adopt these priorities, we need to be at the forefront of the conversation, saying that these are the priorities that we think are important. Because what will happen is, it's a debate, right? With all these people from representing jurisdictions from all over the state. And if we come out with things that are too far outside of what people are focusing on right now, it just won't, it, 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 it won't get any oxygen. People won't even consider it. So the proposal that uh, Councilmember DiBala has, I think would be best for us as a municipality to pursue it through Ms. Wilkerson um, as a priority, rather than trying to um, you know, get MML to back it. I mean, you know, we can, it, 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 it's not a horrible thing that we're, we'll propose it, but it's just not gonna happen this year, I don't think. I don't think anything about uh, climate change is gonna be on anyone's minds. It's gonna be police reform and COVID-19.
Councilmember Smith, um, this is uh, Suzy Ludlow. I was wondering if um, the kinds of proposals that Councilmember Caustic just went through um, could be under a category of COVID-related items. And so uh, I think that it would be really useful, instead of just saying, we want more mo, we want more money because of COVID impacts, to identify those different kinds of steps of workforce, uh, variety of things that say, here's our, here's some tangible ways to help address this um, that may be different than just, you know, some kind of, almost a community development block grant category of, of funds. Um, and the element of mental health can actually be mentioned both in the COVID item as well as in the police item. Um, and so, you know, there may be some ways that we do that. I, I do think that the, the climate change issue probably will end up taking a bit of a backseat for them and now.
And, you know, I agree 100%. That would be um, a great way to get to uh, our priorities by including workforce development in um, the COVID stuff.
So I, I hear what you're saying about, about climate change maybe taking a backseat this year. Um, last year, the strategy was, and, and I understand that's last year before COVID, but because community choice energy was something that everybody needed to support or it wasn't gonna go anywhere because of the utilities. or wasn't going to go anywhere because of the utilities, um, it needed lots of folks saying, we support it and not just it one, one, um, one county, one municipality saying it. And it turned out that there was a big push and it made some progress. And then we all know the legislature closed early. So one question is whether to propose to MML what they're going to do anyway, or to propose to MML other issues that are really pressing, that do require statewide attention, knowing that ours might not be picked. And, and I would argue that proposing something that other folks is not, are not proposing is a good idea. I do like the packaging approach on COVID, not just here's COVID, but here's COVID workforce development, here's COVID and some other things. I think that makes a great deal of sense. I like putting the police. I think this is a matter of strategy, whether to put the police, the two police issues together or, or keep them separate. It's the same kind of what's going to work better that I'm saying about the climate issue. But I do, I do think there's a role for, for saying to MML, here's something that other folks aren't going to be bringing up, but you should be paying attention to it. Thank you.
Um, Councilwoman CRC?
Um, I do want to echo, um, the points that have been raised. I think, um, first and foremost, pushing forward on police reform is going to be critical. So I think that's an area we should focus on. In terms of COVID, I'm actually a little torn on whether or not we should, um, have a separate proposal devoted strictly to, um, direct municipal reimbursements for expenses related to the response. And then a separate proposal that's about economic stimulus. So it would include workforce development, business support, rental, so, you know, support for renters. And I kind of mentioned in the email, you know, just cause, do we want to kind of take a look at some of those things, um, that are definitely impacting people right now because they're unemployed and kind of package that up as, you know, like economic stimulus proposal, COVID reimbursement proposal and police reform. And so I'm not sure, you know, council member Smith, I know that, that there's been a lot of MML efforts to try to get our, our share of the pie in terms of the CARES money. And similar to, you know, the law officer bill of rights piece, you know, it wouldn't make sense to separate it out, you know? People are likely to say no to, hey, you get your share of the CARES money for reimbursement for COVID, but yes to, yes, we think there's a lot of things that can happen at the state level in terms of economic stimulus. You know, I, I kind of wonder whether or not that would make sense as, as well as another way of kind of, divvying things up and what might be more likely to fly.
And I would just say that, you know, right now, I don't know. You know, um, I know everybody is, is focused, you know, on what's happened with the pandemic. That's what everybody was talking about at the, um, summer conference. I moderated a couple of sessions. It's just top of mind for people, workforce development. I know we could wedge that in, in there. The separating it out from your, your ideas, separating economic development out from, uh, what's going on with COVID. I don't know. I don't know if people will say, well, you know, the focus, the conversation will be on COVID. And then if we try to push it to economic development because they're trying to get money because of all the losses that are attributed to COVID, if people will lose that train of thought, I don't know. Because everybody's just talking about COVID, COVID, COVID. And I know if we, you know, use these other issues as like, uh, sub tiers of what's going on with COVID, I know people will pay attention to that.
Yeah.
Everything is on top of mind.
So, so it sounds like it would make sense to package all of this together. So COVID would be, you know, um, municipal reimbursement for direct expenses tied to COVID, business stimulus, workforce development, um, as well as rental housing support kind of stuff.
Right. And, and, you know, even though we put everything in, in, uh, packages and that's all under COVID, it's not going to stop the legislative committee if there is a majority of, of the will of the body to pick one or two of those things to say, these are going to be our priorities. There's nothing to stop that. But I think we need to be on the record with, you know, I hate to say this, the, the Christmas tree, a laundry list of things, um, rather than, you know, letting the conversation be dominated by other jurisdictions in the state.
Yeah. Okay. No, that makes sense. That makes sense.
If I, if I can jump in on this, the way that the legislative committee often works and is that the staff kind of rewrites things as part of this too. But if you've got a long list, then you've at least got an opportunity to have that discussion. If your item is not one of the ones that people want, it disappears. And, and so even if there's an important part in there, uh, it's, it's gone. So I, I could see putting it as a laundry list. But it also, it doesn't, I think, take away councilmembers CRC from our approach as a city to go after these things very strongly in separate ways. I think, I think that those, that makes more sense on a, on a case by case basis by the city.
And, and, you know, part of this is not just what we're going to get, uh, for MML's priorities. It's to define the conversation with the legislative committee.
Right.
So that the members know and the leadership of the legislative committee know what are important, uh, legislative priorities for jurisdictions like Tacoma Park, like a Gethersburg, like a Rockville, right? Even though the body as a whole may not agree, but leaving that conversation, there are members that are going to continue to talk about these things. Cause they're going to say, hey, well, yeah, we didn't support it. It, it was not approved by the body, but I think that's a good idea. And how can we work together on it?
Okay, that's helpful.
And I'd say, you know, um, council member Smith, I think you can probably speak really well to this too. I think it was like when we did it, what was it, four or five years ago? The, um, oh, the utility thing that then you were the head of the committee. Like we proposed something to MML through the legislative action request and it didn't, you know, move forward. We went our own path with budget language, but it did end up, um, creating that, um, task force committee that you headed up. So.
Yeah, that's, that, that is an option for the, the legislative committee to commit it, create an ad hoc subcommittee, not to happen with, um, uh, the utilities. So, you know, I mean, you, you just, you never know, but the sense I'm getting, uh, is they, these are going to be the priorities this year. It's going to be COVID-related and police reform because people are clamoring, uh, to have something done in these two areas.
Cool. Any other comments or? So I think what we'll work on and bring back for next week to vote on, I'm definitely hearing coalescing around, uh, COVID and police accountability and transparency. Um, and there's still a few people who, um, may want something on climate. So, um, we'll, we'll pull those three together, um, and, um.
And then if there's anything else that we, that you want to have kind of considered as part of a vote, if you can get the information to us so we can make sure that it's in the package.
Yeah. Great. Awesome. Thank you so much. Uh, our last item on our agenda this evening is the budget amendment, um, our FY twenty twenty-one budget amendment number one.
Thanks. And if I, um, Jesse, am I going to be able to share my screen?
You should be able to, yes.
Okay.
There you go.
Yeah, let's see if I get to. How do I get to the full screen? I was sitting on blanket. Oh, there we go. Okay. Let me go back to the beginning. So, uh, why don't you go through the, um, budget amendment? The first year, the first of the fiscal year budget amendments always complex. And this year was worse than ever, so it's taken a lot. I wanted to have a presentation to try to group that information for you. Um, so the, uh, FY twenty-one budget was adopted by the council in May. The last day of FY twenty was June thirtieth. The first day of fiscal year twenty-one was July first. And so this is our first budget amendment. It's actually two amendments to the general, uh, to the regular budget and then the stormwater budget. Um, in July through October, we will be working, um, with our auditors and our financial advisors preparing, having the audit prepared and preparing the CAFR, the comprehensive annual financial report. Blanking myself out so I can't see everything here. And, uh, then there's a traditional presentation in November by our auditor and by our actuary. January, uh, through March, the staff works on the preparation of the next budget, which would be for FY twenty-two. The council considers that April through May in twenty twenty-one. And then the last day of the fiscal year is June thirtieth. We usually have about three or four budget amendments through the year. Um, and we also have quarterly financial reports. This year we'll, we'll also be having more discussions, um, pretty much at the time of the quarterly financial reports to also look at the hold list that was put, uh, as part of the FY twenty-one budget. And the, kind of the general discussion has been that that, that a real look at the hold list, uh, for the first time would be in October. But I think we should be looking at it, um, frequently. So there's several types of budget amendments. Um, we refer to, especially in the first, uh, budget amendment of the fiscal year, the topic of, we call them carryovers, but they are not carryovers. It's just a, it's just a quick way to refer to them. It's an appropriation to the new fiscal year budget of money that was approved to be spent in the prior year for that project or a purchase. And that was assumed in the budget for the new fiscal year to have already been spent by the end of the prior year, but then was not actually spent by June thirty. And, um, it can also include unanticipated changes to be appropriated to the new fiscal year budget, receipt of grants, um, new information on, uh, that would adjust, uh, allocations either positively or negatively and new projects or purchases, um, that are of interest to the city. Some of the special notes affecting this FY twenty-one budget is that there's more cleaning up than in past years because a lot of changes were made during the FY twenty-one budget process. And one of the things that you'll see, it's relatively small numbers, but a number of, um, conference and training lines were really estimated during the, um, budget process about what should be not spent in FY twenty, which should not be spent in FY twenty-one. And when we, um, finished the budget and went through to really check line by line, we realized that some corrections needed to be made, um, putting them in the right place. The other thing that you'll see in this budget amendment, um, kind of clearly appropriates some of the COVID nineteen fund that was established by the council in the FY twenty-one budget into, uh, subcategories that were discussed already by our housing manager and economic development manager with the council. Having those in categories, um, helps us more easily pay and track the expenses. So we had some major capital projects needing carryover. These are projects that we thought a certain amount would be done by June thirty, but it's not quite. The ADA sidewalk, uh, on Flower Avenue, uh, is not yet completed. I will say, if you're out on Flower Avenue, the sidewalks are so good. There's a little bit more to do and then we'll get to the street paving, but, uh, I'm very excited about that project. The library, we had estimated a certain amount that we might've spent on the project design, uh, by this, by June thirty and we need to carry that over. And we are, um, doing a badly needed overhaul of the mechanics of the elevator in the community center near the Grant Avenue entrance, and that's also almost done. In, under the stormwater fund, the Tacoma branch project, um, is to, has been delayed. And so, uh, we're carrying over fifty-four thousand dollars for that. And a number of other capital projects or purchases. And so we have, um, public land management, uh, line. This you'll hear in about two weeks, um, some of the study that we've been doing on open spaces and lease equity. And kind of as a outcome of the discussion with council, we wanted to have, and we discussed in the FY twenty-one budget process, installation of parklets, um, small playground equipment or other features to expand access to facilities across the city. We talked about the bus shelter improvements. And so we had some monies, uh, to carry over for that. The public art installations, um, had been, uh, for projects on Lincoln Avenue and Holton Lane. Uh, and the discussion during FY twenty-one budget was to carry over the money for FY twenty and then have a discussion with council. One of the things that we've been talking about is having, uh, our public works, uh, our public art really be, partnered with public works, projects, uh, bus shelters and that kind of thing. And, um, and so there's more discussion to come, I would assume, after your summer recess. We've got some money to carry over on bicycle, facility improvements, site improvements, which are replacing broken benches, signs, picnic tables, bus tubes, planters, et cetera, throughout the city. And those, the various things that I just mentioned, many of them would have been underway, but the pandemic just threw us for a loop in terms of getting some of those things worked on. Now that we've kind of got our feet on the ground, even if we're working remotely, we're able to take on some of these activities. Speed camera trailer was not purchased, uh, by June thirty. One thing I did want to note is that things like a speed camera, uh, trailer could be very useful at times when people are speeding even more than ever because of the pandemic. And, uh, and can provide some, uh, an opportunity for some messaging that may be useful. And then there's a, uh, retainage to the Lincoln Avenue project that just helps close out the project that just needed to carry over in the special revenue fund, that didn't get finalized by June thirty. For the COVID nineteen fund, the council, um, established six hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars in that fund, which spanned, uh, the end of FY twenty and then into FY twenty-one. And the direction to staff was to get funds to those who need it right away, uh, to not wait for July one, the start of the fiscal year to, to, um, help people. We did spend a lot. We didn't spend it all, uh, with, by June thirty. So there is money to carry over to the categories in the FY twenty-one budget. And I've, um, added in a chart that shows a little bit more about this. Uh, of the six hundred and thirty-four thousand, we have expansion of emergency financial assistance, uh, which needs a carryover, uh, the creation of a rental assistance programs, all in the FY twenty-one budget. Assistance to condominium and HOAs has thirty thousand dollars to carry over. In the FY twenty-one budget, there's assistance to homeowners that have non, um, federal mortgages, non federally backed mortgages, um, and assistance with PPE for folks, uh, that's housing related, all in the FY twenty-one budget. We've been working really hard on getting the small business mini grants out. And so, uh, this number will actually be adjusted before you vote on this next week. We have a few more grants that have been processed that were approved and dated before June thirty that the paperwork's just coming through. So the carryover amount will be a little bit less than is shown here. And I will, uh, provide that information to you next week with. And I will uh provide that information to you next week with the changed and more correct amount. Um healthy business initiatives, small business technical assistance, additional economic development assistance, workforce development, all are in FY twenty one budget and don't have carryover amounts. And then there's um some uh just general emergency assistance funds of twenty five thousand to carry over that could be appropriated as as um some issues arise that we are not uh anticipating. We have uh about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars in sustainability funding that could not be spent uh during the switch over on the pandemic. Um many of these items partner with the COVID nineteen fund uh and the other planning, housing and economic development assistance efforts. Um they certainly are key in addressing the council's climate change response resolution. So these are uh funds that are in the FY twenty one budget, but some of the money, it was anticipated that these activities would be started or were underway in FY twenty, but need to have to carry over. So there's a uh low moderate income um housing rebate program of twenty thousand to carry over, residential rebates of twenty five thousand dollars to carry over, business assistance and thirty thousand dollars to carry over, uh assistance to multifamily properties of fifty five thousand dollars to carry over, and outreach, which is primarily um uh it's outreach for these various programs and primarily and in different languages. Then there's a a whole series of um the um various lines in the budget. There's conference and training lines, as I mentioned earlier, for mostly um in the general administration uh finance and hu- um housing and community development areas um where those numbers weren't exactly applied correctly as we went through the budget, and we need to make those collections. Um there's also a variety of miscellaneous carryover items for small purchases, contract services, projects, business assistance and publication distribution. In the agenda package, there's more information on each of these items. Um and um they all will be um activities that will be very useful and are expected in the FY twenty one year. One thing that's a little bit different is that the I Can Shine Bicycle Program was canceled due to the to to the pandemic, and most of the funding for the I Can Shine Program was grants. But we had a city's required match to that grant of thirty two hundred dollars. Uh we would be uh repurposing that thirty two hundred dollars uh for bicycle-related facilities. Uh there were a few stormwater fund carryover items, um labors, laboring parts, uh subcontract, which tend to be uh focused on our video inspection program, water testing, that kind of thing, and uh some contract engineering services. The only thing that is uh new money um in this budget amendment um has to do with some technology-related uh purchases, uh mostly of small amounts that were needed as we adapted to the pandemic, we're in working remotely. Uh so we had some cell phones for staff that didn't normally, in the past, need cell phones, uh but now do. Uh we needed laptops for some folks who mostly had just had desktop desktop uh computers in their offices that needed the laptops to work remotely. Um and then, as we're doing a Zoom meeting, uh we needed to expand our capacity for um remote meetings and webinars.
Are these items eligible for reimbursement?
Yes.
Okay.
Mo- most of this, most of these things are, and as are uh some of our other things, and I've I've we're compiling that information. I have a little bit of that information tonight.
Thank you.
And there you go. Reimbursements and grants will be coming. Um so um we did not have enough information uh to put it as part of this budget amendment, but it will show up in the next budget amendment. Uh we have now received twenty one thousand dollars through FEMA. Uh our first um reimbursement request to FEMA totaled a little over twenty seven thousand dollars. Uh we were the first municipality in Maryland to get a FEMA reimbursement because we have great staff who are on it. Uh particularly uh Ron Hardy, our Emergency Preparedness Manager, and our Deputy City Manager, Jessica Clark. Uh they've been phenomenal at being on top of the um submission process. We um have pretty much together our first uh estimate to submit to for CARES funding through Montgomery County, and that is already over two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Uh and so we're going to get our share out of the money that came to Montgomery County. Uh but it certainly is um eligible for funding. And so we're hoping to get that reimbursement. We will be submitting that information next week. I think Montgomery County just finally got their portal uh uh up and running for us to make the submission. And we also, I believe, have some grants coming. I don't have that information to share with you tonight, uh but we will have that as part of our next budget amendment. And I think that's everything. I'm happy to answer questions. Uh but most of these are straightforward uh carryovers of things that were intended to be done by June thirty uh and have not been done yet, um other than those items for the um COVID technology purchases. Happy to answer answer any questions you have.
All right, I was unmuted. Thank you very much. Um Councilmember Smith, did you have a question?
I would just like to thank Ms. Ludlow for the presentation. I appreciate all the detail, uh so thank you.
Yeah, I just want to echo. I agree with Councilmember Smith. Um I having it in the PowerPoint in the presentation, um very helpful. Um the budget, the cover sheet for tonight's agenda item was a was a a bit much, um so having it organized like this was very helpful.
It's a it's the budget amendments are always a bear. I have to tell you, they're very much a pain to prepare, so.
The first one's always like.
It's always hard.
Always hard. Uh Councilwoman Circe.
Um I just want to echo my appreciation for the PowerPoint presentation. It was very helpful. Um one question that I have, which might be helpful for for residents that may be listening in, um for those carryover items that we weren't able to do um but um would be able to do in addition to our F our next fiscal year's work, is it that they are contracts? I guess what I'm trying to be mindful of is whether or not we are, we were unable to do certain projects that are staff-intensive. We plan to do additional work that would also be staff-intensive. We're bumping work, um perhaps into the next fiscal year that is very staff-intensive. And so is it that we need to re- reconfigure, you know, the work in some of these areas? And for those projects that we don't think we're going to be able to do, reallocate those funds into the general fund? Or is it that we were working with contracts and things anyway, and it's just getting the money out the door in enough time before the end of the fiscal year, if that makes sense?
It can be a little bit of both, but the the main thing that happened um this year really was the timing of having to go into lockdown and and spend time on the transition and not be able to do some of the ordering and that kind of thing that we would normally do to purchase the benches and that kind of thing. Um one of the things that we did do going through the FY twenty one budget process with you was cut back on some of the things that we proposed to that were on our work plan for FY twenty one, knowing that we still had this other work to do, so we actually cut some of that back. And there's there's stuff that we're not carrying over. I mean, there's some stuff and activities that we kind of looked and said, you know, we we don't have the capacity to do. Uh or, you know, we certainly cut the heck out of conferences and those kinds of things that we we didn't think might happen or uh or we knew needed to save money, and we took those those made those choices. Uh but most of this really was a a pandemic-related activity where we s- we simply couldn't get it done by June thirty, but it was something that was ongoing. And we kind of cut back for the FY twenty one so that we weren't just piling on top of ourselves.
Yeah, that makes perfect sense. Thank you.
Great, um Councilman Kostick.
Thank you. Yeah, I also want to echo others' thanks for the presentation, which I think was a really helpful format to have this in. Um I'll admit that my brain isn't working super great right now because it's late at night. So I apologize if this question doesn't make a lot of sense. Um but one of the things I'm just thinking about as I'm looking at it is um we had, we had identified some things to put on hold um in the FY twenty one budget that were things we wanted to do, but um we were putting on hold and and kind of reconsidering. Are there things here that are similar? Or are these, is that not really a concept that is worth considering in this context? Does that make sense?
Yeah, I mean, I s- almost all of these aren't really things to put on hold, I think. Um there's um but I th- but I think that it is fair to, unless it's a small item, which is a purchase or whatever, and and you just do that, and it's and it's part of what we talked about with the council. Um you know, there may be some things about um some of our outreach approaches or things that we end up talking about weighing with you as you're looking at the hold list. Does something have more of a priority than the others? And I think the important part about the hold list, and it, you know, it shouldn't just be limited to the hold list. It's looks at all of our work plan, is where are our priorities? Um and one of the things that um I strongly urge is a sense of when looking at the hold list, how do we look at it with a race equity focus? How do we look at it with a priority focus to determine what might come off that hold list or where did something swap out? And so um these are, part of the reason that these are in this first budget amendment is that they're mostly not that discretionary. I think they're they're pretty straightforward carryovers. Um things that um some of the staff raised um that I didn't put here were ones that I think we need to have more discussion about. Are these something that would? And that would be a a discussion when you're doing the hold list look. Um so I I try to keep this as simple as possible, that we're mostly carryovers, except for those three technology categories. Um and um other things, I think, require more of a discussion with council.
Okay. Um the other thing is um and ju- and just a note for you to check into. A resident had raised a question about the I Can Shine Program um funds, and the the language in the resolution um seems to suggest that the account that the money is being transferred into um or appropriated for um is still the I Can Shine Camp account, even though it appears to be for facilities for outdoor riders. So I'm not, I'm not sure. I mean, there's no way to tell based on the number there, but just like that for double checking.
Thanks. I will have the finance director double check that.
Okay, thanks.
Great, um Councilmember Siemens.
Thank you, Mayor, and uh thank you, Ms. Ludlow, for this uh this report. I think it's uh it's certainly the um, I think, the largest uh budget amendment I've ever seen. I think it's great because it brings a little uh a little peep through the keyhole at the great amount of work that you've had to do through this pandemic and and kind of the level of detail you have to get down to. I think you did an excellent job. I really thank you for this and and for putting it in a a format that um at least we can follow and and keep track of what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Any other questions or anything? All right, well, that was our last agenda. I, oh, Councilwoman.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I thought I had my hand up, um but apparently I didn't. Um I, my, what I can do is to email specific questions. Um thank you for the presentation. It really helped a lot in terms of understanding what's going on. And I just, my question, my general questions are perhaps similar to the ones that you just answered. So this, in your view, is, except for that one that you mentioned that you were repurposing, the I Can Shine. This is all, is this all uh carryover to do the work that was planned last year that because of the pandemic isn't being done? And you have already looked at whether it's work that still needs to be done? And you have part, okay, um that's it. That's important, I think, for everyone to understand. Um and of these, how many? The, it seems like most of them, there is a specific plan, a specific thing you're buying or doing. Are there any that are very um undefined? For example, you already said that the um public arts money is as yet undefined. Are there others that fit that category of of less, less defined? Whereas on the bike improvements, well, maybe bike pr- improvements is one that's undefined. Uh that that's my question. Most of these are very specific, but which ones, besides the public art, are?
Yeah, I'll have to go back and look.
Yeah.
They're they're not coming to mind at the moment.
Yeah, thank you very much for this work. It's, it was very easy to follow.
Good.
Great, all right. That's it for tonight. Congratulations, everyone. We we going through election trees, budget amendment and legislative action requests. And it's eleven thirty. It's before midnight, so.
Excellent.
Congratulations to everyone for all the hard work. Very much appreciated. Um I will send around the documents that we worked on tonight on the trees, and um please get in any other thoughts on the legislative action items request for MML, as that needs to get posted and voted on next week. Um have a good evening and um we'll see you next week. Um don't forget, five o'clock next week. We have two presentations before our regular meeting at seven thirty. Thank you, everyone.